We're live. Let me hit the recorder here also, but we're live for our work session. And because this is a work session, we don't actually take roll until the regular meeting. And what we do typically in a work session is that we just acknowledge who from the two boards are meeting. So this is a work session with the Town Council and with the Parks, Open Space and Trails Committee or POST. And we have seven, six members of the council that are here. We have Bill Kane, David Knight, Gary Tannenbaum, Bill Infante, and Glenn Drummond from the Town Council. And Elise Huddle is not joining us for the first part of the session because she works for Connect One Design and in fact actively working on this project that we're mainly going to talk about. And so when we finish the Albany Park discussion, we'll text her and have her join us. From the POST, and you can't see everybody there, but we have Cindy Bruce, Jason Groves, Paul Hiltz, Carol Hawke, and Julie Kohler are all either participating by video or they're participating by phone. And Julie apologizes, but she has another commitment and so she's only going to be able to be here for the first part of the work session. So this is a work session with POST. And this is really an opportunity for POST to check in with the Town Council on the work program that they're doing for 2020. And a large part of that is really Albany Park. And since we want to get moving forward on the Albany Park project, we're going to spend most of the meeting today going over Albany Park and what the plans are. And then at the end of the work session, maybe at 5:35, we'll segue to some of the other projects. So before we kind of jump in, most, we're going to start with Giles Thornley, who was, their team was selected by the Town Council last year after RFP process to do this work for us and to prepare the bid documents for us. But before we start, I just want to turn it over to any of the POST members. I'm going to start with Cindy, just to kind of, anybody that wants to make a general statement about Albany Park or any of the other projects that we're working on. So Cindy, and Cindy's the chair of POST.
Hi, I'm Cindy Bruce. I've been with POST for about 12 years, currently the chairperson. So we thought we'd just make a short comment about the Albany Pool. And my comment is that we have, at POST, have, feel like we've worked a long time to fine tune the improvements that we have chosen and we've really focused on the needs of what we've heard from the town and also to try to stay within a very tight budget. We'd love to get Phase One going later this year. And we feel very confident in our processes and our communication and with Connect One. So that's all really I think I'd like to say. Thank you.
Julie, do you want to say anything?
No, thank you. I, I'm sorry, Susan, who are you calling for?
Oh, Julie Kohler.
Okay, yeah, great, thanks.
Hi, Bill, thanks. Hi, everybody, and thank you so much for taking the time to listen to the presentation and make considerations for Albany Park. I think everybody's been in agreement for a long time now that the park is a lovely piece of Basalt and really is, it's been due time for a long time for some necessary upgrades, you know, both for the usability, the aesthetics, and really just the enjoyment of everybody that goes there and uses it and may start going there instead of going to other pools and other areas for the recreation. I wanted to echo what Cindy said and just say that, you know, we've given this a lot of time and consideration. And I do believe Connect One has been a great partner and listener and has really reflected a lot of what we've asked for and have also come up with their own creative ideas and things to implement from their professional point of view. I just wanted to plug one more thing, and that is, I'm a pre-collegiate mentor for Basalt High School. I have 11 ninth graders to be 10th graders. And I mentioned to them this last spring at one of our meetings that the pool was soon to be updated and they just were beside themselves. You know, I think that it's a pretty neat hangout for kids in the summer and a lot of them work there. A lot of them were applying for jobs and hoping that it will be back open this summer. And just the amount of enthusiasm I saw, you know, completely unsolicited was pretty incredible. So just another little piece from the community in terms of contributing toward our excitement about the project and, you know, the reality of who's going to be using it. So thanks again for taking the time to consider all of this.
Jason, did you want to add something?
I just will second what's been said, and I think we all can agree that the park and facility is a real community hub and it deserves some love. And I think now is the right time to focus some attention on it. Thank you.
Paul, do you want to add something? Paul, you're on mute.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Thanks. No, I think everybody's covered it. Giles and his team have done a great job and hopefully the council will enjoy his presentation.
Carol, you're last. Do you want to add something? Or did we lose Carol? She was on here earlier. So I might have lost Carol. And just kind of a recognition also that Glenn Drummond was on our POST committee. So he's been participating, he has participated in a lot of the discussions and work that went on in the past year on Albany Park. So with that, I'll turn it over to Giles. And then after Giles' presentation, I'll kind of circle back on a couple of questions that we have for the council. So Giles, do you want to take it from here?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks a lot for all the compliments, guys. It's been terrific working with the POST committee and with the former council. As a quick reminder, we started this process back last fall and tried to solicit some feedback. And we got quite a few school kids and a few of the public to chime in on some of the earlier designs that we came up with. We've since fine tuned everything and since the world has turned on its head, we've done some even more finer tuning as a part of the process. So POST has been wonderful in terms of listening to the changes that we've been suggesting. In this strange COVID world, you know, if things were ideal, we would have gone from this meeting with your permission and had the typical outreach sessions that we did for, say, the Basalt Master Plan and would have met face to face with people in a venue and tried to solicit feedback. But unfortunately, we are living in a different world. And so we decided that the best way to get the new design and the new message over to the Basalt community was through a video. So I sincerely apologize for my crap voice that will be heard throughout the six minutes duration. You're more than welcome to put it on mute. But at the end of this video, we'd really like your feedback as to whether this video is in good shape to put up on the Bang the Table website tomorrow, as soon as tomorrow. And we're happy to make any edits, but we definitely want to do as much as we can at this point to outreach the community with the designs that we've gone. So there's quite a lot of design, a lot of extremely fun stuff that's going on at the Albany Pool. What a treasured facility that you have there. And we believe that the design we're about to show you will knock your socks off. And so without further ado, I'm not sure how this is going to work, but if you could give me, I'll share my screen and I will put up the movie. So bear with me one minute while I do that. And I hope the audio works. So here goes nothing. There we go. Hello, my name is Giles. My firm has been working with the Town's Parks, Open Space and Trails Committee or POST Committee.
Bertman, Giles.
...with a new plan for the Albany Park complex. I'll be walking you through some of the proposed upgrades and design improvements that are being suggested for the Albany Pool and its associated facilities. We are looking for feedback on what has been planned. By means of a background, upgrading the Albany Pool complex has been a goal of the town for some time. The pool, while a great amenity for the community, but the 25-year-old facility needs some tender loving care. Additionally, the Town's 2014 and 2019 greenhouse gas inventories identified the Albany Pool complex as the greatest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions within the Town's municipal own facilities. The Town's Green Team and Town Council wanted to implement that solution to reduce this impact. Along with the evaluation of the pool's mechanical system, the committee also took the opportunity to review potential upgrades to the changing rooms, provide new family changing rooms, replace the wading pool with something more fun for the younger children, as well as upgrade the aging bathrooms in Albany Park. In the fall of 2019, we asked the public to give us their thoughts on what improvements should be made to the pool complex. And last December, the consultant team presented a new design to the Town Council that took into consideration the feedback that was received. This video is designed to highlight some of the upgrades that are being proposed. We'd be very grateful for all and any comments you might have on the proposed designs, even if it's brief, we want to hear from you. So let's get into the proposed site plan. A new perimeter fence will be located around the expanded pool surrounds. With a colorful bubble motif, this fence will set a new precedent for the pool complex and has been designed with oak walls to provide partial shade, fun shadow patterns, and a place to hang towels. Artificial turf is also being proposed as a water-saving, low-maintenance alternative to sod for all areas between the pool and fence that are not concrete, designed in the shape of a robot. The new kids' pool has been designed as a fun and vibrant, memorable place for the younger kids to get comfortable with water, interact with the water, and take swim lessons. Features of the robot include slides, a zero entry with play features, a swim channel, a splash deck, and pop jet fountains. One arm of the robot provides a place to sit or place towels and is a subtle divider between the kids' area and the main pool. New chairs, lounges, chairs, tables are also proposed for the pool complex, as are shade sails, trees, and perglers with solar panels to provide additional shade and electricity throughout the day. The main pool will be replastered with a new waterline tile and a new ADA ramp will be added to the shallow pool closest to the changing rooms. Feedback from the last survey and community input revealed some interest in adding a hot tub to the pool complex. Placehold a location for the hot tub as being identified on the east side of the main pool, but is not programmed to be built in the next five years. Please let us know your opinion on this. Colored bubbles painted to the pool deck will lead patrons to the changing room of choice. A fresh new look to both the men's and women's are proposed. With new flooring, tile, lockers, plumbing fixtures, and dividers between showers and sinks, the locker rooms will feel much lighter and brighter with solar tube technology that reflects sunlight into the rooms. This will equate to a much lower use of electricity to illuminate the changing rooms. Two family changing rooms are proposed to be in the space currently occupied by the snack shack and kitchen. Each room will have a sink, shower, and baby changing facility with all family changing room lockers being located outside. Replacing the snack shack will be vending machines. A new roof extension is also proposed to be built on the pool side of the existing changing rooms to provide users with more shade. An audit of the pool's mechanical system in conjunction with the Basalt Green Team, Core, and Holy Cross concluded that the first step is to replace the existing boiler with one that is highly efficient and to make better use of the existing solar thermal by adding a storage tank. The proposed system will endure, the pool will be heated to the desired temperatures regardless of the weather conditions during the hours of operation. The closed-loop design allows for the ultimate goal of having an all-electric, net-zero heating system that the town can move to in the future when the technology is improved and the cost is less prohibitive. Also, PV panels will be added to the roof of the main building to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. A key to the design is a new pavilion building. It provides a new flat surface to mount the existing and any additional solar thermal panels to. The pavilion roof seen here will provide this space without taking area away from the pool or park surrounds. The space below the roof provides a place to seek shelter from the elements, a place for the new Albany Park restrooms, and a storage repository for soccer balls and other lawn game equipment for the park. It also could be converted to a new entrance to the pool if desired in the future. Thank you for listening, and please don't forget to leave your comments on the following questions and any other thoughts you might have. So there you have it, guys.
So Giles, could you circle back? Giles, could you circle back and show this, just pull up the slide that had kind of the phasing schedule in it?
Yep, actually, just trying to pause on that. Go back. There we go. So thanks for not falling asleep on that one. I'm bearing with it, I felt like a flight attendant, you know, that you're going to put your luggage in the racks and the seatbelts in my commentary. But Susan, and by the way, this is Seth, the architect from G Group. He did all the design for the interiors. He's working for this on the pavilion group and the roof overhangs. This is the entire Basalt Council and POST committee.
Good to see you again.
And so, yeah, this final slide here is something that we'd like to talk about. Obviously, the Susan and the POST committee have been allocating budget amounts for the next four years. And we would be, prior to the COVID situation, we were really focusing a lot on the mechanical upgrades in 2020. But we feel as though the changing room facilities, as you can see from the existing photographs and the fitness, which are probably the most tangible aspect of any changes that we could make right up front. And we feel it'd be a good use of taxpayer money to upgrade and make the changing rooms thick and span and look a lot more hygienic and a good bang for the buck right off the bat. So in 2020, we have a budget of $625,000 that we are allocating towards the locker room upgrades, the family changing room upgrades, which is by the existing snack shack. And we'd be building that snack shack out just a little bit more to provide that room and accommodate some lockers. And then looking at the upgrading of the boiler and mechanical equipment, as it says here. And also, as a part of the RAMP fee offset, it seemed to make sense at this time to take advantage of Holy Cross's grant application and put the new photovoltaic panels on the roof of the existing locker rooms. So those are the things that we would like to get stated for 2020. And, you know, that's all predicated on the public giving us the thumbs up and of course you guys giving us the thumbs up to begin with. The new waterline line item that you see there would also be a very big part of it right now. Right now, the pool needs to be filled up with basically nothing more than a hose bike. So that's a pretty big one that's been slated for some time and it comes out of a different capital budget improvement. And then the next year, 2021, we'd be, some long overdue replasterings of the main pool has been allocated some funds for that and the order of magnitude of $250,000. And that it would also include the new ADA ramp into that shallow pool and the new roof extension that you saw that goes around the front of the locker rooms to provide more shade because that area is absolutely baking at this point. And then we'd like to see if we can do that robot pool, if you still feel that's the direction we'd like to do. Seems to be gaining some momentum and ground with that feature. And then add some sail shades. That'd be 2021. And then 2022 would be, actually, I forgot to say, in 2020, we'd be adding monitoring devices to the existing solar thermal system to see how efficient it works. And having some TVs and monitor screens at the existing entrance to the RB Park to see how it's doing. And then 2021, we'd be really delving into those numbers and seeing if it's worth keeping the system, replacing the system, or expanding the system. And that would go on to the new pavilion roof that we spoke about in the movie. So the pavilion roof and moving and whatever feedback comes from the solar thermal research would be incorporated in 2022. And then 2023 would be new furniture. So hopefully that covers everything from that perspective. Let me know if you want me to go over any more of the specific budget allocations for each of those years.
And just to kind of circle what our goal was today. One, we just really wanted to check in with the council and make sure that it's okay to throw this information out for public comment. We thought of using the Let's Talk Basalt and putting the video and our questions out on the website, but we thought maybe we should double check with the council, make sure that they were comfortable. And then we would do just a real quick turnaround with the Let's Talk Basalt website. We would put the information at the pool. And when I say quick, I do mean quick. We would just do kind of a week turnaround to get just a quick check in with the public. And then we would come back to the council on the next meeting to get approval to go to bid documents on the first phase, which would be the first phase of the work. So that's kind of the schedule in order to allow us to start construction reasonably after the pool closes in the fall. Some of this work, we think, actually could be done in the winter, but it sure is always a lot easier to do it before it gets really cold and it snows. So that's our game plan. The other thing before I really kind of open it up for questions and to see if the council wants to flip back to maybe some of the other slides is really talk about the public input process. On this project, we were really relying on the input from our committees instead of a really, really robust public input process. So instead, we were relying on drilling down with the POST committee, drilling down with our Green Team, and kind of using our citizen committees. We did do this Let's Talk Basalt task in October of last year, asking folks their input on the pool. I think the general input that we've been getting from people is people are really excited to see improvements at the pool. Maybe one of the more controversial or discussion items that's out there is we, there has been some desire for a hot tub, a family hot tub in the pool. And we have not programmed that in in the next five years, but we've shown a location on the site plan. And I can get into that in more detail if you would like. Anything that you guys want to segue from POST committee that you guys would, before we open it up to questions, anybody want to emphasize anything in the plan? So I guess really, Bill, we're, this is the part where you can go back and chair the meeting because really we're looking for the council to ask questions and provide feedback for us on the Albany Pool.
Great. Thanks, Susan. So any questions from council to Giles or Susan or any of the staff folks that are on hand?
What is a robot pool? I was, I've been trying to figure that out.
It's just robots. It's just...
It's a pool, but sounds pretty awesome. So you're not allowed in unless you're a robot.
That's what...
No, I mean, to be honest, I was looking for some metaphor for Basalt. I looked at a fish shape. I looked at some flora and fauna. And it struck me when I was on vacation in the middle of the night that a robot shape, for whatever reason, I was looking at an image of a robot, and it struck me that the head and the body could be two different bodies. The water, one's shallow, the head's shallow with pop jet fountains for its eyes. The main body is where you actually get, you know, get immersed in water and you can go from one edge to the other and have benches around it. And then the legs, one leg is obviously a zero entry, but the other leg could be bent and could be, you know, converted into a slide. And then the arms, you know, just became this natural, you know, swim channel that everyone loves a swim channel. We did have two swim channels at one point, and then I just thought, two's a little much, so why don't we just create a little divider between the two? And it's evolved into this sort of robot shape that has taken form.
Do you have an overhead view, Giles, that you could share? Because you had, you did have a slide that showed it.
Yes.
Giles, I have this...
You have a pretty good view of this.
You've got control, yeah, Susan.
Okay.
Giles, I'm thinking that maybe the chlorine must have been pretty strong that day you came up with that concept.
It was. And I was, yeah, I was using a lot of glue in my hobby.
Pretty clever.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. People think that's cool.
Agenda neutral object, you know? And there are certainly some things that are more biased to boys and more biased to girls, but robots seem to hit the nail on the head in terms of a gender neutral experience that we could explore.
Uh...
I would like to...
Noises.
Come on, come on, speak into the microphone.
Lots of...
Maybe not, sorry.
So in formulating the priorities that you have for the pool, what drove that for the most part? Was there some initial public outreach? Is this pretty much driven by the mechanical, I mean, fixing the boiler and the replastering? Got to be, it's kind of recurring maintenance items, obviously. Was there some initial public outreach from families that are, you know, pretty much frequent users of the pool?
So the initial outreach went around in October. We did the Bang the Table site, which was, you know, the Let's Talk Basalt site that's been put up, public feedback. It was associated with the master planning effort. So that was, and a newspaper ad was put in for people to direct themselves to that. And then we put a bunch of posters around at the swimming pool to get some feedback. Of course, people, you know, don't always say things if they like it. And you usually hear some things from people who aren't so keen on things. But the word on the street was a very positive response to the improvements. So we felt like the POST committee and representatives of the public and the voice of the public were doing an excellent job of steering us in the right direction. I think they would have put the kibosh on, say, the robot pool had they thought it was a good idea. In terms of the priorities, there are definitely some things that needed, that were on the shortlist from a health and safety standpoint that in the last 23 years need to be up to speed. So we have a swimming pool consultant that identified some anomalies such as the chemical room is, doesn't pass the new codes and some of the ADA codes. And there are some valves and pouring, things like that that we can get into. And there are some valves and pouring, things like that that we can get into that really would, would use a good upgrade and sand filter and things like this. And so those were no brainer items that need to happen right away from an operations standpoint. And as I said previously, the priority was really to get into the mechanical system and wrangle that and try and get these greenhouse gases lower. And it's been, it's been a long process, but a very healthy conversation between Core and the Basalt Green Team and Holy Cross. As I mentioned in that video, that we've all come together and actually concluded that the technology for an all electric pool just isn't there today. It's not there. It will be there, and there's no doubt it is. And we're doing everything right by buying, purchasing green energy. But the existing solar thermal system seems to be doing an excellent job. We just need to see what we can do in the downtime at the nights and the mornings when it's colder and try and maintain that 82 degrees or whatever we're trying to get to during the day. So, and then COVID came along and we had, we had a shift of focus. And we had slated the changing rooms to be done in either two or three years' time. But the post committee and working with Susan, we, we took the decision very, very strongly and looked with Seth and his interior designer at some options that would, not necessarily if it was COVID, but if it was another situation where this amazing facility would be closed down because we weren't prepared. So we thought, okay, let's prioritize the changing rooms. If we do have a similar thing to COVID, let's be ready for the next one. And so the changing rooms therefore went up in their priorities. And it just so happened that, you know, that, I think the public and post are with us in that the public want to see something tangible. It's very difficult to say to the general public, thank you for your taxpayer money. And we put it all into a mechanical system. That's all good and well to certain bodies. But I think most of them want to see something, some tangible evidence of their taxpayer money going to, going to good use. So that's where the changing rooms got prioritized too this year.
Susan, I'm not sure what all we're going to cover. So I, you might want to, are there additional questions from council on pool design phasing? Were you going to hit on budget?
Well, Giles, why don't you just touch on the budget and then I'll, I'll add to it.
Yeah, sure. So as I mentioned, we had $625,000 allocated for this year. And the men's and women's locker rooms were going to be 375. And the new family changing rooms would be 120. And the new MEP boiler system, the new boiler is pretty essential to moving forward. It's something that we want to do this year. It's a very high efficiency condensing boiler would be about 75 grand installed. So we're looking at 625, give or take in 2020. 300,000 in 2021, which the majority of which goes towards the robot pool and installing the robot pool. And then there's a separate line item of 250,000 that's been allocated for the re-plastering of the pool, new lights, new tile, getting up to some code standards. And then 2022 is 400,000 that's been allocated to the new pavilion roof. And the Albany restrooms would then come in at that point. They'll be down and go underneath the new pavilion roof. And then 2023 is 40,000.
And one of the things that we were going to do in our quick turnaround with the citizens is ask them also to kind of weigh in on the, on the priorities. And as I kind of mentioned in our staff report, one of the things that we were looking at is what happens if we are not as robust with our sales tax? So what was included in your packet for all of the post projects was really dialing down this year, like what happens if we only got 50% of our sales tax? And in future years, what happens with, if we only get 80? So the good 80%. So, and we, we were having, we were allocating funds to Albany Park as being one of the significant projects that we wanted to spend money on. So we never know the actual amount until we get our bids. And we'll drop, dial, we're pretty comfortable with the first phase. So I guess what I'm really looking for for the council is just kind of a thumbs up, like, okay, good to go out and get public comment. Or if you have other questions before you're ready to do that.
I would like to ask one more. Is, was the schedule driven by cash flow or by just the reality of timing and ability to get things done on a construction sequencing? Was thought given to compressing this schedule? It just seems like it's, you know, protracted over a pretty significant period of time. Was there an option to maybe try to do this whole deal in two or three years? And what sort of drove that decision? And I'm, I'm all ready to give the thumbs up, but I, I am curious as to, this feels like we have scheduled this over a long period of time. I would love to see the shade structures and some of the, you know, more sort of attractive user features of the improvements happen a little faster if possible.
I think the original goal, you know, was to have the pool improvements done in a two-year, two or three-year kind of timeframe. So this is kind of a conservative layout. If our economy remains like, remains strong, then we have the sales tax revenue. I think we could compress it into like a three, a two or three stage. The one thing that complicates this is that before we put the pavilion roof on, that involves the restrooms for Albany Park. So that pavilion building included the restrooms for Albany Park. So for that phase, we have to have enough cash on hand to be able to make that improvement. But that's a good point to see if we can compress. I think this year, well, anyway, we can look to see if compressed part of it is going to be dependent, I think, on what we're kind of seeing in the next two or three months in terms of our sales tax input and how comfortable that we feel allocating those dollars.
Yeah, that's totally sensible. But yeah, I'd love to see us revisited again at the end of summer. It looks like we got a pretty good year one program. But, you know, if we are hanging in and doing pretty well relative to amended budget on sales tax, it'd be great to accelerate the completion of this thing. So that'd be my comment. So you got thumbs up from me. I don't know, you know, we can go around the table here and see if other councillors want to weigh in.
It looks like Glenn wanted to weigh in.
The only comment I've got is on that hot tub deal. Make sure we keep that very tempered down. It's not going to fit into the green deal in the long term of things and it's probably not going to fit into the cost of things. And we don't want the public to all of a sudden be like, oh, great, we get a hot tub. When that's probably not a feasible reality ever. That was discussed extensively.
I personally don't get the allure of sitting in 85 degree temperatures outside and sitting in a hot tub that's 103 degrees. But I'm not, not a lap swimmer. Certainly something our team isn't, isn't in favor of. But we do need to listen to the public and there are a few.
There's definitely a few that.
Maybe some serious lap swimmers that it relaxes their muscles or whatever, but yeah.
I know there's a few in the public that they want it, but we've got to be careful.
Sorry, this is Julie. I was just going to chime in for a second. You know, there could be a dedicated solar thermal tube dump just for the hot tub. And that is totally feasible because the amount of volume that is in a, let's say, an eight by eight hot tub and a solar tube collector is totally feasible. It's like a dedicated, separate system that could be proposed kind of as a unit, if you will, and it wouldn't steal away from the other.
Yeah. It's just a very high temperature, 103 degrees to maintain. And if we do switch to an all electric system, I don't know if we're. Personally, I don't, I don't, I feel like it's kind of hypocritical to have boiling hot water 103 degrees when we're trying to be as greenhouse gas friendly as possible. That's just my opinion.
Yep. Well, it's a sensible one. Any other comments from council? Yeah, I think, I think you got a pretty strong thumbs up. Gary, do you have something?
No, I was, I just wanted to voice my support to potentially move the schedule up. Because I think once you see some of the construction going, you know, having it over three years, I think we could do it in two. And obviously, we can revisit that later this year when we see the tax stuff coming in.
Absolutely.
Thumbs up here. I echo Phil and Gary on that.
Thank you, David. Thank you very much.
Thumbs up. Giles, don't let it go to your head. You're not like.
Oh, it's not. Probably easy to do. Thanks very much, Jeff. We worked hard on this. I'm so glad you like it. And we will get it uploaded and out to the community tomorrow.
Excellent. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, we're hanging up unless you need us to do anything else.
Thanks for speaking, you guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye bye.
I think the other thing that we just wanted to highlight from post, some of the other major efforts obviously are buying the Basalt River Park, the one acre which we have in the budget for $1.3 million. We have some planning money in the planning budget for finishing off the design on that project. And the other thing that we are looking for, the post committee is looking for, is to spend more time on the T of their name, which is Parks, Open Space and Trails. And they would like to spend more effort on that. There's also some signage that we need that we're.
Hey, Susan? Did you say the T part of Parks, Open Space and Trails or the?
T part, yeah.
D.
The T, sorry, the T, the T part in post because we have.
No, I know. It sounded like a P or a T. I didn't know which way you were going. I just, yeah.
So we've got some smaller projects kind of programmed for that. And we're going to be bringing back to you at the next meeting, we have the park, some park rules that we want to take back to the town council along with our donation policy. And we also have some signage that we want to do on our parks consistent with our adopted sign plan that post prepared and the town council approved. So anything else on projects, Cindy, you think that we should emphasize?
No, I think you covered the ones that we were going to hope to focus on.
Bill, Gary's raised his hand.
Can I ask one question? It's Carol Rock.
Yep.
I know we have some things scheduled for the pool in 2020. I'm assuming that's fall work. And then for the robot pool in 2021, does that have it open for the summer of 2021? Or is that in the fall of 2021, opening in 2022?
I think that's yet to be determined. I mean, we would hope to be able to do it at the beginning of the, you know, before the pool opens. But it, it's also very possible that it would be done after the pool closes. We're doing the big plaster project next year that was originally scheduled for this year. And it was significant, it came in, the bids came in significantly higher than we had budgeted. So we'll be doing that. So it'd be nice to do it all together. I just don't know if we'll be able to pull that off.
Thank you.
So my question was on the T part. One of the things I'd love to, because we kind of put it in the master plan. For the T part, it would be great to start working with Colorado Parks and Wildlife on, you know, trails into the Lake Christine area. I think this year we saw, you know, a lot of our citizens rediscover some of the trails back there because you're kind of stuck at home. And I think, you know, when we had conversations with Matt and JT, you know, we did, we did talk to him about it. And I'm not looking for a massive trail system, but I am looking to, you know, work with them on, you know, really opening up a little bit of the, the state lands behind Basalt for trails. And, and going through a process that respects, you know, the, the real wildlife issues that are up there, seasonal closures that makes sense. And understanding that, you know, it is, you know, for, you know, one of the things with wildlife refuge is hunting and, and really working through that. But I'd love to find, to kind of start implementing that and using the momentum that we have with CPW right now to, to really see what, what can be done. And so I'm not necessarily looking for massive amounts of bike trails and hiking trails, but just seeing where we could go with it. And I think post would be, you know, positioned to be able to work with them on it through a public process that, that really engages everybody, but also does planning to really learn about where the wildlife use is and everything else. So anyway, that's my two cents on the T part.
I think that's all we had for our stuff. But I did want to acknowledge that Brian Passentis has been on listening and Brian's the new pool manager. And this is day three of the pool being open.
Great. Well, thank you, guys. This is great work. You guys put a lot of time in. And, you know, I know the community really appreciates the post committee and the great stuff that you've delivered for the town. And we've got a lot of exciting stuff ahead. Hearing from my constituents, I think there is some real desire to move forward with the park purchase. And there's a strong desire to get that black fence down out there. So I think I've been communicating with our town manager about it and hopefully we can find some way to accelerate that process. I know we've got lots of irrigation pipe and pismeters and ungraded ground. We've got some challenges, but it'd be a nice thing to get that done sooner rather than later. So really appreciate the post work on that as well.
Phil, that was my comment a little bit. I mean, hats off to all the hard work going into Albany. But I'd love to step back and take a broader look at posts. And given that we are now looking at roughly half of the revenue that we had anticipated at the beginning of 2020, that's got to raise some questions about how and where and when we spend. When we had gotten into the whole parks discussion, I had asked that we condition our purchase on the financial close of the developer. And I would love to see if someone on staff could reach out to the developer and see if they're still on the same schedule that they were earlier, which was to reach financial close in July or August of this year. I think there's, you know, a fairly significant reason to, to question whether they are going to be able to hit their timeline. And that then also begins to affect ours. And I guess the question for Ryan and Jeff are, what is our expected closing date since town did not agree to condition our, our purchase? When are we expecting to close on the town's portion of the CDC parcel?
So I'm happy to answer that. You know, the town has been in touch with the applicant and the owner. And, you know, we, we did as part of the approval have the purchase contract in there. And we're trying to advance that purchase. And one of the things that we're looking at is trying to do that closing this year, June or July, if that's not in the cards, it is due.
You're talking about our closing, the town's closing or the developer's closing?
The town's purchase of our portion of the property. And so that is what we're, we're trying to advance so that we can get, get ahold of that property and then start planning the improvements on it. of that property and, and then start planning the improvements on it. And then, uh, we're not wed to, um, the developer's closing of it, though, uh, we know the developer's working toward it, I'm guessing his timeline is not the same as it was when he had his approval, but he's got vested rights and, um, that's, you know, what he's relying on at this point. So, um, I, I don't think, we're unhopeful of, of that, uh, project going through, but, you know, we don't want to be, um, beholden to, uh, that timeline if we don't have to be, so we can get the, the parking grid in place.
Phil, I'd suggest this might be a policy discussion for another time, because it's precisely the notion of having the town exposed in owning a parcel adjacent to a black fenced parcel that may not be sold or developed for, um, within a timeframe that would be consistent with what we want. So, you know, for another day and time, but if we could put that on the agenda and just look at, um, what our best hypothesis is about the developer's intentions, timeline, and what that implies for us, and the expenditure of taxpayer resources.
I think the reality of the situation is we're waiting for floodplain and everything to get, uh, approved by the state.
Hmm.
Yeah, the, the lower is still out there, which is the letter of map revision for the floodplain, so that's correct, and, um, the, you know, timeline on that is late fall, probably November, uh, maybe even into early December, uh, before that, uh, floodplain issue is resolved. And that was the original timing of, of the developer's, um, but, you know, agreement to, to purchase. And, um, you know, I think as it relates to whatever happens on the property that will be developed privately, that does not necessarily affect our ability to make improvements. Um, and about half of the area that's within the black fence will be owned by the public and, um, would be, um, approved, so...
Yeah.
Uh, developer's timeline again is, uh, enumerated in their vested rights, so whether it takes, you know, a year or it takes three years for him to start, he's still, um, you know, within those rights. And so, uh, if council would like to talk about that, um, please do let staff know, I would suggest we do that once we have a better, um, understanding of, of the current owner's position on, um, getting going with the subdivision, so we can actually create a lot to buy, um, so.
Great. All right, thank you, guys, we, uh, are gonna have to wind down our, uh, Post discussion, we've got a noticed, uh, council meeting that begins at six o'clock, which is approximately right now, so, I get to make a one-minute break, and then we'll reconvene, uh, and call the council to order, so, take, let's take two minutes, and, uh, we'll get going, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Post.
Thank you, Post.
Thank you.
Meeting for the town of Basalt, Basalt, Colorado, eight one six two one. Uh, and, uh, excellent, thank everybody for the work session with Post, uh, the very, very impressive, uh, committee, I mean, all of our town commissions are really working hard, I mean, Green Team has done a great job with that pool, and really thought through a lot of the, you know, greenhouse gas issues and, uh, fossil fuel consumption, I, I'm just impressed with how conscientious everybody's been on our volunteer boards, I think they're, they're really doing great work, and really appreciate it. So, with that, I would ask Pam to call the role for the, uh, for our council.
I'd be happy to. Let's start with Ryan Slack.
Here.
Thank you, Ryan. Gary Tenenbaum?
Here.
Phil Infante?
Here.
Glenn Drummond?
Here.
David Knight?
Here.
And Ms. Hoddle. Present. Thank you.
And I'm here also, Pam.
Owen Bill Kane, while you called it to order, so you have to be here.
Okay, so, yeah, yes, that's, right, okay. So the first order of business is to get council approval for the consent agenda, I can't tell you honestly, what's on the council consent agenda, maybe you could, uh, let me know what we have.
It's just a minute.
Okay.
Mayor, I move the town council approve the consent agenda items as presented, which are the minutes from May twenty-sixth.
All right, second.
Hey, Ben, uh, is there anything else on there, Pam, before we take action, or is it just the minutes?
It's just the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So it's, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Uh, it, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is, uh, call the public for public comment, uh, please limit, if there are public listening in and would like to address council, uh, please limit your comments to three minutes, and address your comments directly to the mayor, that's me. Uh, identify yourself by name, address when making comments, comments should be courteous, civil, and constructive. Uh, town council will make no decision to take action except to direct town manager, so, um, we, uh, have an open mic, are willing to take public comments, should anyone have any. Pam?
So I wanted to make sure that you were aware that both Regina O'Brien from Eagle County and Janice Voss-Caudill from Pickens County were both present at this meeting in one of the, uh, squares here, the Hollywood Squares, and, uh, would like to speak momentarily about the upcoming elections.
Great, and we want to take that under public comment period here?
Yes, they, yeah, we didn't get the information until kind of late, so, they're...
So you want to do that now, do that first?
If you don't mind.
No, that's, that's good. So Janice, who, who's, uh, gonna lead up? Janice, the floor is yours.
Janice, your mic is muted.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do is, um, go over the logistics, the basic logistics, and, um, I'm tag teaming with Regina, and Regina, jump in if there's anything that, um, you have more energy on, or think we need more detail, but, um, as we always do, we like to remind, um, everyone that, um, the June thirtieth primary is around the corner, and we actually dropped mail ballots to all active registered voters in the state of Colorado. So what does that mean? Democrats will receive their Democratic ballot, Republicans their Republican, and the Libertarians their Libertarian ballot. All unaffiliated will receive a Democrat and a Republican ballot if they haven't picked a preference, and just a reminder for the unaffiliated to pick one, vote one, and return one of those ballots. So, if you do not receive your ballot by the end of this week, um, I would recommend, Regina and I would recommend, um, everyone to go online, anyone to go online to govotscolorado.gov, and go into your voter registration record and see where you told us to mail your ballot, and if it's not the correct address, update it, and we will void the first ballot and send you to the correct address, um, the ballot that you should receive. The other thing is, I want to stress, um, that we're asking people to do their part, we're sending you a mail ballot, but in light of COVID, we are urging everyone to return their mail ballot, um, versus going to the voting centers, if they can, return their mail ballot, and utilize the drop boxes, um, that are in place. Um, real quick, and I'll let Regina, um, mention where they are, in Eagle County, but in Pickens, they're at the administrator's office in Pickens County on Main Street, Snowmass Village, and of course, Town Hall in Basalt, um, would be the main box for, um, Basalt residents. Um, Regina, I don't know if you want to add any more?
Yeah, thank you, Janice, um, so we have the shared drop box that you are, are so gracious to allow us to have, right there by Town Hall, excuse me, and then at the Eagle County Center, um, there by our clerk and recorder's office, uh, right by Crown Mountain, is another 24-hour drop box. Um, if anybody from your area is passing through Up Valley, we have additional drop boxes in Edwards, Eagle, and Avon. So to reiterate, we, um, ask if you have not received your ballot, as Janice said, by the end of this week, give us a call or check your voter registration, we can mail ballots up until June twenty-second, after that, voters will have to come into a vote center, and again, we're trying to, um, limit the capacity of voters who actually have to come in to a vote center, so if we can get you that mail ballot, and we can mail it out by June twenty-second, and then you can drop it off in one of those convenient locations, um, we can enfranchise all our voters and help reduce the spread of COVID.
Great.
The other thing I would mention, um, tag teaming with Regina, is if you choose to mail your ballot back, again, um, the twenty, we would recommend, as Regina said, the twenty-second of June is the last day we can mail a ballot, we would recommend to individuals, that should be the last day that you want, mail one back to us, and please use the drop boxes. Okay? Regina, I'm gonna, I'm gonna dive into, um, polling places, if, if it's essential for anyone to go to a polling place, um, early voting starts the twenty-second of June, Monday through Friday, and on Saturday, and then on election day seven to seven. And then I think the last thing, unless you have any other detail, Regina, the last thing is to remind people that election night reporting, um, at, at, um, on the Eagle website, as well as Pickens County's website, election website, we upload to the Colorado Secretary of State's election night reporting system, and if you, when you enter that system, you can see what's going on throughout the entire state.
And I would just add, if you have any questions, or your voters have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to, to my office, um, elections@eaglecounty.us is our, uh, election team's website, we're more than, or email address, and we're more than happy to answer any voter questions and to make sure voters have their ballots, and Janice, I'm sure your contact information, uh, your team would be the same.
We're the same, we, you can call us or, um, go online, and, um, both Regina and I would encourage people to, please, this week, we will look for your ballot, um, call us as soon as possible, if you have any concerns, questions, we're happy to help, and, um, return your ballot, um, so we can process them and, um, provide returns on election night. And we are, we are anticipating voting, um, processing ballots the next day, counting the next day, because we are working with COVID, six, six, six-foot distance, et cetera, implementing all our, our processes as well. That's all I got.
Yeah, any questions for council, for Janice or Regina? Thank you very much, that's, uh, really helpful to know, uh, and, you know, thank you so much for, uh, plowing through these, uh, elections in light of, uh, COVID restrictions, that's sure it's, uh, quite a challenge, so, uh, thanks for that. Um, now, I think we will, uh, open up for public comment, uh, Susan, are you gonna be the, uh, emcee for public comments?
Yes, and I have, uh, two, uh, folks to call, and as noted on the agenda, if you want a public comment, you email planning@basalt.net, or you text nine seven oh nine eight seven seven oh one oh with your, uh, name and phone number. So, the first one, I don't have a name, uh, and I'll place that one first.
Hi, this is Stacy Kraft at Inglewood Volkers, please leave me a message, and I'll return your call as soon as possible, thanks.
At the tone, please record your message, when you've finished recording, you may hang up, or press one for more options. To send a fax, press four now. To leave a callback number, press five.
Hey Stacy, this is, uh, Susan Phelps over at Basalt Town Hall, and we were calling you for your public comment, uh, we will go ahead and call the second person that asked to speak, and then maybe try you one other time, uh, before, uh, we, we move on to other agenda items. Thank you. So the, the next call, uh, is from Toni Kronberg, and I'll call her number now.
Okay.
Hi, this is Toni speaking.
Hi Toni, you have, uh, reached Basalt Town Council meeting, uh, this is the public comment period, and you know the rules, you have three minutes, uh, to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Hi Kelly.
Hi, everyone.
Who's yours?
Bonjour, um, hello, come on staff, so you can hear me okay, right, Mayor Kane?
Yes, just fine, thanks, Kelly.
Okay, um, first, um, I would like to give a positive to the Basalt swimming pool opening early this year, earlier than expected, special kudos go to your Parks and Recreation Director, Brian Passenti, he was instrumental in working with Garf, uh, Eagle County to come up with guidelines, so that Eagle County had the confidence that Basalt could safely open your pool. I've been lap swimming first thing in the morning, and the water is crystal clear, and it is just a, a wonderful, a wonderful experience at seven o'clock in the morning. Of course, it was a sunny day, but I listened in on your work session with the Post Committee, and you've heard from both Susan Phelps, Director of Planning, and Giles, the Principal with Connect One, that they're looking forward to getting a thumbs up from the public on their proposed, um, phasing and improvements in their robot pool, and, um, I think most of you know, I don't really know David that well, but really quickly, I've been swimming at the Basalt Pool for thirty years, and I supported the efforts back in the day to get the pool going, and I've been, uh, have a little swimming business, I've been teaching in Ass and Snowmass Basalt for about forty-five years. About five years ago, I came forward to the Basalt Council and asked if we could have a hot tub and/or a family warming pool put into the pool. Um, I personally feel that the Basalt Pool is the best pool in the valley, because of the Z-shaped that it has and the concrete decking, of course, the locker rooms, you can only fit with COVID now one or two people, but, um, as I said, I really am looking forward to the public giving a thumbs up, and what's happened right now is the Post Committee and the staff have worked diligently with Connect One, and the proposed improvements have not been vetted by the public yet, and I do know that the public definitely sees some more opportunities, and, um, would like to get those expressed forward, and the fact that in ten days' time, that you're being, you'll, you'll be asked to approve the bid documents, that that does not give enough time to really take the public comment, and then to come forward with any proposed improvements. Also, Carbondale, finally, after ten years, um, since their rec center bond was approved, they've almost got that paid off, and they're conducting a survey for the new pool improvements, same thing that Basalt did, and again, Basalt exceeded my expectations, because they actually brought a pool consultant on board, so to speak, to move this project forward, but what the difference is, in Carbondale, they've extended their outreach, especially because of COVID, to make sure that they've gotten all the demographics and segments of their community, then what they're done, based on the survey, they've come up with three concepts for the public, or like, you know, to vet on, and then they hired... And then they hired a financial company, I might, my three minutes?
Yeah, you're, you're.
So then they hired a financial company to crunch the numbers, to see if it's affordable, sustainable. And I'll put my comments in writing, but I think that Basalt, that we should have a public open house because Eagle County has granted permission to have public open houses up to 50 people, just so long as they're distance six feet apart. But I want to give thanks to everybody, because this is moving forward, and it'll probably be the quickest completion of pool improvements for any of the municipalities that I've ever worked with. So heads up, again, just looking for the public to have some input before the bid documents are done.
All right, thank you. Susan, any other comments?
Thank you, Tony. I'm going to call back Stacy and give her another opportunity, so just give me a second.
Hi, this is Stacy Kraft at Inglewood Volkers. Please leave me a message, and I'll return your call as soon as possible. Thanks.
At the tone, please record your message. When you've finished recording, you may hang up, or press 1 for more options. To send a fax, press 4 now. To leave a callback number, press 5.
Hey Stacy, this is Susan Phelps again from Basalt Town Hall. I think we're going to be wrapping up our public comment period on the agenda tonight. So maybe you could send an email to Ryan if you have a comment that you'd like to make. Thank you, bye-bye. So I didn't get any other emails or text messages.
Thanks Susan, we will move, at this point, we'll move on to our 620-published item, which is the Town Manager's Report. So Mr. Mahoney, you have the floor.
Very good, thank you. Oh, did you have something to say?
We were at Mayor and Council reports?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're right.
Sorry.
Off the bottom. Yeah, let me back up to the 612, wait, and we got the Mayor and Council Reports and Comments. So floor is open for any counselor who would like to make a comment or provide a report to council. I'd be happy to make a few comments if no one else wants to.
I got one Bill.
Okay, go ahead Ryan.
Um, I'd just like to let everyone know that Rudi opened, I guess now, eight days ago. They've already found seven muscle boats.
Oh no.
Boats infected with muscle, that's good though. I mean, that means the money that we're spending to support the Rudi Water Power and Authority, which then goes on to support the inspection process up at Rudi Reservoir, is doing its job. They're intercepting these boats, they're getting them cleaned out before they get in the reservoir, protecting our water source for the frying pan valley, as well as the Roaring Fork Valley. So it's money well spent. The team up there is doing awesome work, and I just can't say enough for everything they're doing. So it's, I think last year they caught, I want to say eight boats, so we're already up to seven. I think it might have to do with Rudi not opening early enough, or not opening at the normal date, so people were traveling to outside waters and now coming back that it's open. But it's, we're doing our job up there and protecting our water, so it's great.
Nice. Well, thanks for your work on that, that's great, Ryan, appreciate hearing about it. And yeah, it's good and bad, I mean, you hate to see all these boats showing up with quagga mussels in them, but good thing we're intercepting them and getting them cleaned out, so. Thanks for that. Any other counselors like to provide a comment or report on work outside council meetings here?
I got a few things Bill.
Elise Hauktel has her hand up.
For what it's worth. I wanted to jump in and say that Sarah Nandoni and I participated in a board meeting for the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, and they are also going to be having a board, or sorry, a board retreat, yeah, next Friday, and have submitted a policy statement for review for all of the community members to sign off on. Fortunately, I didn't finish reviewing it today, it's 21 pages long, but I don't anticipate that there will be any issues or conflicts. My understanding is that it is almost identical to last year's, which was ratified by the previous council, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that we are reviewing that document right now.
Nice.
And also just, I'm still learning this all myself, obviously, since I'm new board member, but the organization, which goes by the acronym CC4CA, does a lot of legislative work and policy work towards climate action. So that includes air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, inventories, and that sort of thing. And all of our, I shouldn't say all of our nearby municipalities, but a good portion of them, Aspen and Carbondale, and Picking County and Eagle County are all members as well, so it's a great group of folks.
Great. Thanks, good to know that that's going on. Any, anyone else?
Bill, I got a few things. This is Bill Infante.
Hey Bill.
And I guess I wanted to start, I just wanted to say, I had spoken with one of our constituents today who also keep thanks and praise on Brian Pacenti for opening the pool and doing a great job. So thanks to him and all the staff, and that is very much appreciated. On basically restaurant recovery and kind of some updates there. And everybody's kind of lurching forward, hoping that their revenues, well, that sales will remain strong or pick up through the summer. There have been kind of lots of whatever variability during the weeks. We've driven by some nights and things are full, others not so much. But they are also grappling with kind of the differences in the variety of public health orders that have been issued by counties. Have had some issues with patrons whom they would love to have more clear and concise signage. And so I wonder, Bill, if we ever made a decision on that or not, to get them more clear signage, because after walking around last week, most of them were using signs that they had, in some instances, downloaded from the internet. I didn't see too much consistency, it was quite a bit all over the place. So again, there is a suggestion that maybe consistent and concise signage would be good. I'd also like to see if we could do something with those big blocks that are placed in the center of town. And one suggestion would be to just pump that to BPAC and see if they could sponsor some kind of an arts campaign contest to design the art, or to design the blocks. But they do look like we robbed a kind of Soviet socialist warehouse at some point. On a broader issue, I've spoken with some of our bankers in town and some of the utilities, and I think inasmuch as it appears that COVID has, that we've bottomed out, they're not, we're looking at a bottom sometime in the future when federally or state-mandated forbearance on evictions, foreclosures, and utility disconnects expire. And so I'll talk about that a little bit next week at our retreat, because it does have media bearing on kind of what we do and how we do with our own budgeting. And I know we budgeted very conservatively, and I really appreciate that. Quick update on two things. The Mountain Pact, which is a Durango-based NGO advocating and lobbying on policy issues relevant to the Roaring Fork, was in touch early this year. They asked, they were soliciting people to sign on to the Greater American Outdoors Act and the subsidiary Land and Water Conservation Fund. They've been following up with quite a bit of lobbying and advocacy. I've been participating with them, I had signed on to their letter. I brought this up at one of the early council meetings, Bill, before you were sworn in. But this is gaining a little bit of momentum. I invited Elise to join me, and so we've had calls with Gardner's Office, Bennett's Office, Stipson's Office, and tomorrow comes Nogus. And it would be great if the council could sign on as a whole in support of this Greater American Outdoors Act, which provides resources to local communities and counties for the purpose of investing in environmental goods. And we could talk about that more. But the legislation should be introduced for Senate vote next week, which could be a good thing, of course. Senators Bennett and Gardner are actually quite active in this. They're, Bennett is a cosponsor, or Gardner's a cosponsor, Bennett is a signatory. On other issues of land use, the US Forest Service and Senator Bennett's office are both soliciting input onto the US Forest Service Leasing Authority, which is relevant to the 70-acre parcel that sits down behind Crown Mountain. USFS has its comment period open from, until July 6th, so if anybody would like to comment, that could be valuable. The big issues that we're looking at are the duration of the leasehold. Right now, it's kind of limited to 30 years, we're looking at 99 years. And then Bennett is very interested to make that 70 acres his showcase or signature project. And so working with Eagle County, working with the state, with USFS, Basalt could be on the, basically, at the sharp end of a very important initiative. Last one, Bill and council. You guys will see invitations probably tomorrow from Blue Star Recycling. Blue Star Recycling is out of more or less Colorado Springs, but they've got offices in Boulder and Durango. And they collect e-waste, process it, and then send it for reclamation, basically for reprocessing. But they're opening their site over in the Willets Bend area, where there are some spare warehouses, and they are going to be employing somewhere between 6 and 10 individuals, some of them on the autism spectrum, which is also a very, very cool kind of twist on this, that they will be providing employment for people who are not always employable. So you'll see invitations for that, but it's coming up on the 24th of June. That's it for me.
That's, thank you very. Okay, yeah.
Sorry, just to quickly follow up on Bill Infante's comment about Mountain Pact. As he said, I joined him on those calls, and I was sort of just a fly on the wall. I didn't know much about this organization, but I also had a conversation with Chris Mingus, who is in the Climate Action Department at the City of Aspen, and they are also a member, and he had really good things to say, and I really very much trust his opinion. And I think that this is a really good organization. It's all, it's targeted to specifically small mountain towns and some of the issues of small mountain towns. So I would love for us to discuss becoming a part of that organization on a long-term basis.
Great. Sounds really worthwhile, I guess, you know. We, before council, you know, we have to get some materials in the packets for the council to review the Forest Service legislation and whatever info we could get about the charter and what the nature of the partnership would be with the Mountain Town Pact. That sounds, sounds pretty good. Other comments from council? Mine's just a very brief one. One is I thank the town and the community for a heartfelt memorial for George Floyd that we held at Lyons Park on Sunday afternoon. And I just thought it was a wonderful reflection of the compassion and caring and consciousness of our community. And what also reminded me of is in 2011, we, the Town of Basalt, signed on to an internationally-based compassionate community movement. And in coming weeks and months, I'd love to see us revive what those general principles were and see if there's an action plan that may flow out of that to just reconfirm our commitment to equitable, fair, and compassionate treatment for everyone regardless of race, creed, color. And, you know, it was heartening to see how committed our citizens are to fairness and how supportive everyone was of our police department and our philosophy of community policing. And I just think we all came away with the feeling that we're really on the right track, and we got the right people in place from a policing standpoint. So this will be an ongoing conversation, obviously, but, you know, for, there's no city in our country that was not touched by the events of the last two weeks, including us, even, we're only 4,000 people, we're as much involved as anyone. So I am grateful for that, so.
Hey Bill, I got one.
Yes, sir.
On to that, you know, one of the things in our strategic plan is really to engage with, you know, some diverse populations and trying to especially engage the Latino population. And I would love to, I don't want to get into it now, but I do believe that as a community, we need to do better on that. I know we have it in our strategic plan, and, you know, we want to do it. I think we just, and we can discuss a little bit about this at the retreat, but I really believe.
Hey, the sound isn't working. Let's do a timeout, because the sound isn't working on grassroots. Caesar, it says the sound isn't working on grassroots, so I don't know if it's.
I hear that. Can I hear your mic as well?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. You have not entered any number. You have not entered any numbers. Please re-enter your meeting ID. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. Please enter the meeting password. Participants in the meeting.
See. Couple of things here. So wanted to just report on, we've been working as staff with Takaw and with the Chamber and have a summer programming that will replace this summer's concert series that we traditionally had. Thinking a little bit differently on, you know, the times and the public health orders. But really trying to couple this effort with that of the Basalt Bucks. And every Wednesday, from June 24th through August 19th, we're inviting the community out. We would love to see them going out to eat, going out to shop. And in both Willets and in downtown, there will be multiple live acts. Buskers is another term that we've been using. But it could be anything from music to, you know, acts like you might see some juggling or, you know, a variety of, of different creative things that Takaw is going to be producing. And so, a pretty exciting opportunity there. And they will basically bring, bringing the entertainment to the people. And so, we're going to try to have, try to avoid having people crowd around so that we can respect the public health orders. And hopefully with those that are dining al fresco, they can kind of be that traveling troupe throughout the streets and provide some entertainment. So definitely a different idea, but one that I think could be a fun way to get people out on Wednesday night. So it's 5:30 to 8:30 every Wednesday this summer. I did get word that Eagle County, they're submitting another variance request that should actually be into the state already for their Black Diamond phase. And they'll be, you know, working with the state on that. Essentially, what that could allow is group sizes up to 250 people. They'd remove the cap on indoor dining at restaurants. You'd still have to social distance. It would just be an elimination of that cap. Also, a removal of the cap for lodging, and you would still have to social distance there. And then, or swimming pools would be another one, but still social distancing. I don't know that that would change the landscape in our pool a whole lot, but we'd leave it to Brian Passenti to work with the county on that. And then the camps. So basically, trying to make summer camps consistent with what the state order is requiring. And really doubling down on the five commitments. Making sure that as we sort of loosen up and get some more opportunity for people to get out and enjoy each other in the, in the summertime, that those five commitments are, are held. And that might be something that we look into to really try to help support them on that. But again, that's so maintaining your six feet of distance, washing your hands frequently, wearing face coverings when in the public, staying home if you feel sick, and getting tested right away if you are experiencing COVID-19 symptoms. And let's see. So one other bit of information, there's been plenty of discussion I've heard with different cases and whatnot going, going around. And so basically between Eagle County, Garfield County, and Hittin County, there are four new confirmed cases. I've heard numbers ranging from, you know, up to 10 or 11. But the information that I have as of today was that there were four. There was some discussion that perhaps some of those folks were either employees or had been in the city market here in El Javel. So there was, there were people putting things out on Facebook, and I wanted to make sure that we were getting the right information out there. I did reach out to Eagle County, to the Public Health Director, and they will follow up with the business and just go over their cleaning protocol. But he did indicate that their corporate office was, you know, already on it doing extra cleanings, deep cleanings in the store. And they didn't have any reason to believe that, you know, the store itself was, you know, a risk to the public. So I want to make sure I get that out there for you all. And we'll keep you updated on those. But the one thing is, we are going to see more cases. And that's just something that we keep hearing that drumbeat from the, from the Public Health Directors in our respective counties. And they are, they will be reporting that on the dashboards, but just something we have to expect. I did get in touch with Matt Yamashita to talk a little bit to him about gun range updates and got that information from him. So basically, the samples have been collected. They were collected by the end of May and have been sent off to the lab. And those were collected in accordance with CDPHE's recommendations on their sampling strategy. He expects that it'll probably be August when the results come in after the report is complete through their third party that is doing that testing. The new hours at the range, like I mentioned at last meeting, will be in effect as of July 1st. The camera system, that is actually built, and it is ready to go. They're doing a final walkthrough with a contractor tomorrow, in fact, on that. And they're just, they have some questions on data storage and how to retool some of the, some of the site, I guess, on it. And so, they will have cameras on each range. That includes the club range, the parking lot, and the, the road entering the site. So that is complete. He indicated that he'd been in touch with Chief Thompson with the Fire District, as well as Sheriff, as well as Sheriff Van Beek. So they're staying in close contact when it, when the fire restrictions go into place. And fire restrictions will not necessarily trigger a closure. Sheriff Van Beek will, will be reviewing those. One of their worries is if, you know, they close it and push people out to the forest, that, you know, it's sort of uncontrolled in those environments, and they don't necessarily want to do that if they have something that's, you know, under watchful eye of, of management. They do, in fact, have a range officer that's hired for 40 hours per week in addition to their uniformed officers. So they will be onsite. Usually, they're trying to, to be there at the busiest times. But that should go through November. And they are actually actively working on the fire break. So they have their equipment operator up there, working with the fire chief, and building what is essentially a, a big roadway, working with Holy Cross and the chief to sort of design that. And they will come back in with a seed mix that is both fire resistant and is, requires low water. So before they do that planting, they'll have this fire break in, and the, the water source is the final piece for them to work on there. So. And then finally, the signage. That was the last piece of the short-term fixes. They've got the layout and the language for that. It needs to go through the final approval, and then those new signs should be posted both interior to the shooting area, on the exterior, and then at the entrance to the range. So. Matt did indicate that he would like to come and talk to the council. I think we'll do that at the, probably the first meeting in July. There's some other rule changes just generally within CPW that he wanted to come and discuss. And did indicate that, you know, they're still keeping those long-range options on the table. And they'll, you know, be working on those over time. And I think that's all I've got for you right now.
Thank you, mate. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions from council for Ryan, our town manager? Thank you very much. So our next item is financial update from Kristy Hamrick.
Hello, everybody. How, how's everybody doing tonight?
Fine, Kristy.
Fantastic. Well, good. I'm just gonna share my screen with everybody, and then we'll just go through this. And shouldn't take very long. But I think I've got some good news for you guys at this point in time, so that's always good to present on good news, for sure. Okay, I'm gonna just kind of recordinate this, see if I can move things over a little bit and adjust my screen so people can see, hopefully. Maybe it won't work. Wait, yeah, well, there we go. Okay, that'll be perfect. Okay. Okay. So, so the sales tax report. You know, I apologize for that not going out in the council packet, but we just, just received those numbers on Monday. So I don't want to delay two weeks to get those to you. So we get those out ASAP. And, and that's why we get them to you kind of at the last minute before the council meeting is because of the timing when we get them from the state. So thanks for your patience on that. But this is just really important financial information. Very timely that we want to make sure to get to you as soon as possible. So, so one thing to say, I'm starting with the, the 782, which is the sales tax report, and then we'll go into the revenue summary. And is that the May sales tax report is what we're reviewing. That is for all of the results for sales for April. So that would be the first full month of stay-at-home orders, so fairly interesting data. And the, I, I believe it to be fairly favorable. Overall, there are obviously winners and losers. Unfortunately, with this COVID issue, which is no good, but for the, the month of May, we only saw a 7% or 6% decline compared to the last year, May of 2019, which is a positive. Then if you look at the positives, we saw a 20% increase year-over-year for the month of May for retail food, which is still very substantial, and retail liquor increased of 33% compared to years. When you're looking at the, the major impacts, there's no huge surprises here. We're looking at lodging at, at 79.2% decline compared to the prior year. Restaurants at about a 60% decline. Sporting retail was about a 50% decline. And auto was down about 25%, over 25%. So definitely some, some industries that were hit pretty hard with this thing in, in April. Yeah. So, so that's the bad news of it. The good news for the town from our sales tax side is our model anticipated 442,000. It came up at 490,000. Because as we were going through this thing, we didn't know really quite what to expect because the, this has really never happened in our lifetimes with COVID. We didn't know how prominent this, this, this problem was going to be, how many cases there would be. And thankfully, it, it's turned out that there aren't very many cases. And so, so that's why we're seeing a favorable compared to our revenue modeling as well for the COVID. So that's roughly 50,000 over what we saw for the month of May. The year, year-to-date numbers are very strong, which, you know, going into this whole COVID issue, from the first quarter results were very strong. It was around 17% increase for year-to-date April, and now we're at 12.6% increase between years for May, or 311,000. Remember, we didn't budget any increase in sales tax between years. So that's positive on our budget. So one thing to note on that, one of our largest sectors in the economy is our retail food sector. And when, when those go up a 10% average increase for January through May, that's a big deal. So that's why I noted it here, is a 9.7% average increase year-to-date. It's fairly significant in that sector. I would say also the retail sales is, is also seeing even a larger increase than this, but, but yeah. As far as a percentage basis. So let's see. I'll, sorry, I have to retool this quickly. See if I can. There we go. All right. And so then, I'll just show you real briefly the year-to-date numbers and where those sectors are that, that we saw the, the issues with COVID right there. Year-over-year, year-to-date, lodging was 11.7% down, and around 20% on, on restaurants there. Retail sales, as I said, 48.8% increase. Very, very significant there. And that's mostly because, well, I could almost say it's almost all because of the online sales. That's a big part of that number there. And there's your 9.7% in your retail food. When we go into our month of May here, you can see, here we go, lodging, 79.2. There's your, your declines here in sporting retail. So, yeah. It's big, big percentage changes. I mean, obviously, this really has impacted businesses a lot differently, depending on the sector. Any questions from the sales tax portion of this report?
You know, no, no questions, but a comment certainly is that it's evident that, you know, sharp declines in restaurant activity resulted in booming sales at the grocery stores. And I, I just think that if we're smart, we stay very, pay close attention to this and consider more aggressive stimulus programs where we take our almost windfall here of sales tax revenue and redeploy that into stimulus programs, redistribute it into things that would stimulate business in town. So, you know, I don't, specific proposal, but I think that's, you know, leaning from the numbers, that's, that's sort of the policy implication, I think, that, that one could take away from this.
Well, the other thing to consider as well, and that's what I'm going to go through in the next part of the report on the revenue modeling, is that, that we're not going to see that, that as large of a decline in our revenue estimated for the year. So maybe we can look at, Ryan and myself can start talking to department heads about what those critical expenditures are we need to add back to the budget as well for this year.
Great.
All right. If there are any other questions, I'll just go right into the next one.
Great. Good job collecting the taxes, Kristy.
Oh, well, it's mostly the state, but-
Yeah, now I know.
Yeah, yeah. But no, just got to report on them. So, so financial update here. As I said earlier, we were about 50,000 higher than projected on our sales tax report. So that was positive. So what that really ended up, there was a couple of real favorable issues that, that hit our revenue for this month, in the month of May. And, and I'll go through those in a second. But our prior estimate of, of reduction in revenue was 1,339,221 there. That was from the last month. And now that's gone to just under $800,000. And now that's gone to just under $800,000, less than budgeted revenue for the entire year. So I would see that as a win there for sure. We're adding about 450,000 back to our revenue for the year. Because when you have 50,000 in your sales tax for one month coming in, then you're gonna see in the percentages that then it does change your modeling quite a bit. And it impacts those months substantially. So then you increase that revenue line. The other thing that we did was we also received in some more building permits again. So now we're actually ahead of our budget on that, which was a surprise for our building department and for myself. But you get a couple of large permits coming in, and that kind of stuff does happen. It's a fairly fickle industry, and sometimes you don't know exactly what people are gonna do with building. But people are moving forward, which is very interesting to me. So this was what I was just talking about, is the additional expenditures that we have postponed in the town's budget, 1,155,718. We'd like to look at adding some of those back, and we can bring that back to the next council meeting, see what that looks like, and give you an update on those numbers if that is a go with you guys. I'll give you guys the totals here in a second. So let's see. So I'm gonna go down here to our summary with fund balances for our unrestricted fund balance operating. So when you look at your revenue here, we're now 792,000 down for the year. And we've cut a little bit under 1.2 million so far and delayed those costs. And so we're gonna look at balancing that out a little better if we can and having those conversations again because the department heads really, were really hurting with some of the costs or the expenditures that we really need and those things that are important for the town to maintain. So we'll bring you back a list on that one if that's okay the next meeting. Okay? So I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, but I will note, you know, Bill Infante was talking about the property tax and that next phase of the potential impact from COVID. And we're still kind of putting in a 9.8% decline because we really don't know what's gonna happen with those sales of properties. And unfortunately, some of the sadder part of this situation, if people, you know, do lose their homes, which I hope doesn't happen, but could, that's what we're planning for right there conservatively. We've slightly increased our specific ownership tax compared to the last time as well. Our franchises, I've moved up because so far we haven't seen as large of an impact as we thought there. And let's see. We're holding steady on our pool. You know, our pool doesn't usually break even, but this year they're gonna be bringing in probably a lot less money. But it's not all about that. It's really about helping the community and giving them, providing a service right now. So it looks like we'll just be bringing in about 10,000. We may be better than that, given that Eagle County is lifting their orders further and the other county may, Picking County may as well. So let's see. So then you get to your 792,000 or 6.8 million right there of impact. So then, I usually go down to this number here, these numbers on the percentages that we're estimating. So these are what we actually saw for the month of April and May. Sorry, it's hard to just highlight those because it's not quite that same kind of PDF document. But these months here. So, and then you could look into the next month on what we're anticipating. We believe that these numbers could get better in the next month as well. We're being still a little cautious. I'd rather be a little cautiously optimistic than just go from pessimistic to optimistic to pessimistic. So to give a little continuity and just to continue to collect data as we're making the best decisions as we can financially. Any questions on this report?
Think so. Any questions?
It depends which report in aggregate. I think this is great, great work, Christie. It is wonderful that we're coming in a little bit ahead on a couple of things. It's also impossible not to notice that retail liquor sales were up 33% in the month of May over the prior year.
You know, Bill, I think that tracks with my personal.
Probably tracks with a lot of us. But I think there are going to be a number of potential threats and risks that you're clearly very aware of. We'll talk about them hopefully a little bit more at the retreat. Don't know how to address them. I was, I was interested, you mentioned building permit fees. I was curious whether we, where we stand with the Stedman project. And then in looking at the report too from last year, I was wondering where we stand with any future or subsequent tranches of underpass funds from the tree farm. Are those revenues that we have already collected, or are they on their way, or do we not know?
So I don't know about that second half of revenue that we still need to collect, that other 428,000. But we did do a reconciliation of those funds from the 428,000 from 2019. And those were mostly, came out of restricted funding sources such as Post and the Rita's. And so we refunded those specific funding sources. There was a slight amount that came out of the operational funds, but that's how that one played out.
What about Stedman? What do we know about that? Are they moving forward? Are they breaking ground?
I don't, I don't have the information on that. I don't know if Susan or Ryan does on that one.
They're still...
Susan, are you still on?
Yes, they're still, they're still moving.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me, Ryan?
No, no. I can hear them talking in the other room, but...
Maybe we can ask her a little later.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, Stedman has submitted their site plan application that we're working through, but they have not submitted a building permit application as of yet. We would expect that in a month or so, it sounded like.
Okay, and so it's conceivable that we would see building permit fees this year?
Yes, most likely.
Fantastic. That's great news. I mean, it's wonderful news from the permit fee perspective, but it's also incredible news for Basalt that Stedman is gonna be breaking ground on a major medical facility that is world-class.
Yeah. That's, that's big news.
Oh, it's huge, Bill.
Do we, do we have any intelligence on how the OrthoAspen-Stedman merger is proceeding? Is that any of our business, or do we, you know?
Well, we've reached out, trying to get a meeting with those folks so that we could just learn a little more, introduce ourselves, say hi. And as far as detail, so far, you know, I'm aware of what the article indicated in the paper. I think they're getting through those finer details and said they'd be ready as far as that transition of ownership by the year end, I think. But hopefully in the interim, we can get in front of them and learn a little bit more.
No, it's, this is all, obviously, I second that comment. I think this is very big, very big news for Basalt.
Bill, Bill, it probably would be worth, you know, kind of getting a meeting with the CEO. My understanding is that it is Stedman that is acquiring OrthoAspen. And I, the fear that I had when reading the article was that they were going to do everything in Aspen and abandon here. But that's definitely not the case. This is gonna be a flagship destination. OrthoAspen will continue. They are, of course, going to right-size the total staff. But Basalt is gonna be the hub for this valley that'll handle all of their back office as well, which is also really exciting because that means more employment here for Basalt residents.
Yeah, that's all, that's all pointing in the right direction, for sure.
No, it's really good.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it wouldn't hurt us to roll out the welcome wagon for those guys.
Yeah, absolutely. Show them some love.
Christie, thank you. This is, you know, these are very impressive numbers. The work is really excellent and very detailed, very understandable. And it's always cheerful when you show your board of directors a $50,000 overage over projected revenue. That's, that's not a terrible story to have to tell.
Yeah, I like those presentations.
Okay, any, any further questions before we move on from council for Christie Hammerick? Thank you, hearing none. Then I would, I think we turn to the Basalt Bucks update.
Yes, so Christie and I'll maybe tag-team this one a little bit. But last week and a bit of the prior week, we're, you know, pretty much fast and furious trying to get all the details ironed out for this. So we now have a live webpage that can be found or linked through the town's website. And it's separated into two landing pages, one for recipients of the voucher and one, of course, is a business toolkit. We have sent emails out to all of our business license holders and made calls to businesses that we know are around and just didn't have their business license updated so we can get them all squared away and signed up. But on the business toolkit, essentially, we've got the opt-in that businesses are able to do, and that'll go on the master list of participating businesses. There's directions on, you know, basically how the program will work, so they can read through that, as well as frequently asked questions and a poster for them to post in their businesses. And then a remittance slip essentially that once they collect their vouchers, they just fill out the slip, it's very short. And we'll be cutting checks weekly for those reimbursements. So far, we have 12 businesses signed up. We do have an email specific to this Basalt Bucks program as well. So folks can email us with questions, and that's basaltbucks2020@basalt.net. I did get one email today on that. So as far as the vouchers themselves, we are using Basalt Printing. Wanted to keep it local, of course, as far as that expenditure went. So they will be printing the bucks, printing the envelopes, and sending them out for us. So that's happening as we speak. So it's like things are getting underway. And then, as I mentioned before, we've got the summer programming, and we're really trying to get, you know, kind of tie this program into that and get an excuse for people to be out and about during the week on what might otherwise be a quiet business night. And the Chamber has been very helpful on that front as well as TACAW. So that's been a really great partnership in trying to come up with new programming. And so, you know, I think all things are getting underway, and we're excited to get those vouchers in people's hands. And that mailing should happen here imminently. So that'll ought to go out this week.
May I ask a question that is kind of, I don't, we're doing this in real time, so we're, you know, as they say, we're possibly building the plane as we're flying it here. In light of what we just saw in the previous presentation, do we have the flexibility? Are we nimble enough to change these certificates from 20 to 25 or 20 to 30? Or can we strike while the iron's hot and spice this up a little bit with bigger vouchers? Or are we too far down the road with the printing and modeling and all the rest of the stuff?
The latter, yeah. This is, this is already cooked and it's at the printer at this point in time. Adding to, you know, would not be possible at this time.
Okay. But, you know, let's keep that. I would say we, we take that 50K of found money and save it for, you know, rainy days later in the summer perhaps, or, you know. I, I think we ought to be thinking hard about some way of redistributing that money back to our, you know, businesses and citizens. And, you know, we're, we're doing pretty well here, and there are lots of individuals and businesses that are not. So I think, you know, the right messaging here would be to, you know, keep some of these funds earmarked for redistribution. One person's view, I'm not trying to, you know, run the, run the ship here, but that's, that's one person's observation. I'd love to hear from anybody else on council, see what they think.
Bill, I was thinking, I wonder if there's some way that, you know, we could say if you use it on Wednesday, there's some kind of multiplier effect that wouldn't necessarily require us to change the value of the coupon. That was just off the top of my head.
I don't know how that would work.
I don't know either.
You know, I think the, I'd worry a little bit about the confusion of that because every, like, all the details are printed on the vouchers. And so if we're adding two and that's kind of an unknown, I mean, staff would be happy to be thinking about what comes next. I mean, this one was kind of a... In light of current public health orders and, you know, potential threat of going back to more strict public health orders, we're gonna know more by the end of the summer when this concludes. So is there, you know, a next, a next step where we can think for, you know, things along those lines at least for, you know, a next, next program? The one other thing, you know, I think Christie mentioned it in her update is, you know, we, we have built a budget around some needed maintenance and basically bringing services to the community. And while we definitely need to keep an eye towards supporting our businesses, we also want to make sure we're, you know, keeping some powder dry so that we can get through the year on, you know, some of the capital projects, things that we've been delaying for years to make sure that our infrastructure doesn't somehow become compromised. So, you know, just those, those are some of the things that your town manager thinks about as we work through these. And we'd be happy to, you know, kind of bring those, those things back to you, as we said, so we can, you know, chart that path forward and then see about carving out some for what comes next with the...
Any comments from council on Basalt Bucks?
Yeah, I just really quickly, I would want to kind of see how this campaign unfolds, see how the remaining tax revenue situation this summer unfolds. There could be more money, or it's hard to say. Hopefully, this trajectory continues. And then, like Ryan said, keep the powder dry and then weigh that against everything else that we've, you know, previously had to cut in budgets, you know, what, what needed maintenance. So I, I think it'll reveal itself to us later in the summer here.
Well taken. Anyone else going, going? Go on, thank you, guys. This is a quick, quick work. Glenn, did you have something?
Just nice job.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too. I think this is a quick action and a pretty quick turnaround. I like this graphic. This is not hard to miss, hard to miss. This one's pretty, pretty cool.
Yeah.
We're excited. I mean, it was definitely a full team effort over at Town Hall. So everybody chipped in and we got it done.
Yeah, you know, I did want to make sure, as Christie mentioned, so we had, Christie did a tremendous amount of work and Jenny right there with her, Pam, we had Dina in the police department do the Spanish translation for us. And so, am I leaving somebody out on that?
Bill, Bill Ray.
It was a big help to us in this. So just want to make sure we acknowledge that the whole team.
I mean, I, I think that's right. I mean, this was a concept we were talking about two weeks ago. And here are the certificates. So that's, yeah, that's, that's pretty, pretty damn responsive, I would say. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
That was the goal, yeah.
We will turn to the next portion of our agenda. We have three council action items. The first is a continued public hearing and second reading on ordinance number 11, series of 2020. It's an ordinance of the town council, town of Basalt, Colorado, granting approval for a two-family dwelling located at 710 East Sopris Drive, Basalt, Colorado, also known as the Perko application. James Lent presiding.
Yes, just a quick second here. I'm sharing my screen. Okay, thank you. We do have the applicant here this evening, John Perko. As the mayor indicated, this is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance on an application submitted by John Perko and Jennifer Riffel for special review for a two-family dwelling at 710 East Sopris Drive. You can see it here on the map. Here's the location of the property. Here is the intersection of Frying Pan Road and East Sopris Drive. It contains a residence of approximately 3,600 square feet. And the residence was remodeled in 2018. There are some photos that were in your packet at the first reading. And I've got them on the screen here as well of the property. It's zoned R2. And as was noted at first reading, the applicants are proposing to add a demising wall. Let me go to the plan set. They're proposing to add a demising wall on the first floor and then to convert the facilities into a full kitchen on the first floor to make it a two-family dwelling unit. As was considered at first reading, staff did identify a series of discussion items that we went through at the first reading. Some of the highlights are consistency with the master plan. Staff and the planning and zoning commission felt that the proposal was consistent with some of the objectives of integrating and maximizing attainable housing in the 2020 master plan, as well as the objective related to infill housing. And those goals were included in the first reading packet materials. Other discussion items that were considered at first reading included consistency with neighborhood character. The applicant identified a series of properties in the area that had multi-units on them, including the adjacent property to the west, which is a triplex. And then staff at the request of council provided a list of two-family dwellings that have been approved by the town over the years, and those are included in your packet. So staff and the P and Z felt that two moderately sized units on the site were consistent with the neighborhood character. There's also a requirement in the ordinance prohibiting the transfer of the units as separate units as they have shared water and sewer service to the two units. And so as a requirement of the public works department, as well as the sanitation district, they have to be transferred together. So at first reading, the council approved the ordinance and staff has amended the ordinance since first reading per the motion, as well as the direction from the council. So we've removed the deed restriction requirement that was in the draft ordinance. We've also added language that requires a minimum six-month lease requirement per the motion, as well as we've added language that would require the tenant on the first floor unit to occupy the unit as their primary residence, similar to what is required of ADUs in the town. And then we've also provided language that has an occupancy priority for local government, as well as special district employees, employees of Rocky Mountain Institute, the school district, as well as SKICO. And then the other minor change is that the park land fee is required since the unit is not proposed to be deed restricted. So that being the case, the, as was discussed throughout, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval. And so staff would recommend this evening taking applicant comments, taking public comments because it is a public hearing, and then providing council discussion. If you're comfortable with the ordinance, you could approve it on second reading. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And we have John Perko with us tonight as the applicant.
Good evening, John. Do you want to make some comments?
Um, just really briefly, first of all, thank you again for all sitting here to review this. Really taking the time and thanks for staff's work, taking the comments from the first reading and incorporating those. Yeah, just kind of wanted to reiterate what James says, you know, we heard, heard everyone loud and clear last, last meeting. And worked to, I believe we captured everyone's, the comments that were brought up and have those incorporated in this new language, that going from the 30-day minimum rental to the six-month minimum, having the priorities stated for the different organizations and entities that we would like to have preference to, a priority to. And yeah, and just as James said, I think last, you know, in the first reading, it wasn't, I think that we had, I hadn't brought it up about the development fees that with this proposed language that we're offering, we will pay all the development fees. Whereas I think with the deed restriction, those would have been waived. So another, I feel that, you know, that's a bonus for the town. So, yeah, I think, you know, this, this looks great. I hope you guys, that this new language works for you. And David Myler has also joined us. Here to kind of answer any questions because he helped with drafting some of this language. And just want to check in with David if he had anything to add as well.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I don't have anything to add to John's presentation. I'm not sure if you can hear me or not. I'm not sure.
We can hear you, Dave.
Joined in correctly, but anyway. I believe that John and Jen have done a good job of satisfying all of the town's requirements, master plan wise and code wise, and responded to the comments from the first reading. So I really appreciate the thoughtful consideration that council is providing and would encourage you to approve the ordinance as presented.
Thank you. Any questions of council to the applicant or to James? Okay, hearing none.
Phil, I have, I have a comment or a question for James, but if it's a public hearing, doesn't, doesn't the public speak first?
You can go ahead and ask your question. Typically, we do do questions before public hearing.
Okay, happy to jump in then. At, at first reading, I had thought that we were largely looking at technical issues associated with construction of a new ADU. But I subsequently came to understand that actually many of the questions that had been raised in the public comment were much more of a procedural nature. And so I, I did want to bring them up because the, the procedure has to do with the representation of legitimate concerns that were associated with consistency with zoning and code, consistency with traffic and parking capacity, and some other topics that I guess were asked and citizens were looking for, for some, some answers to. And it, I guess, goes back to the prior remodel and is not related exclusively to this. And so the question, as I now understand it, is one of administrative procedure. Did we follow all the rules and enforce them when the first remodel was built? So does the existing remodel conform to code and was it properly permitted? Then there is a question of administered oversight that's kind of been overcome by the event of removing the deed restriction. But we're still holding them to six-month lease, tenant must occupy his primary residence, which suggests there's going to be some oversight and some enforcement. And I myself wonder how we're going to do that. And then I guess it, the, the last question is just one of responsiveness to citizens and taxpayers who are asking, and I guess it's a question about the obligation and interest that we have to be as responsive to our citizens as we possibly can be in answering questions that seem pretty legitimate to me. So the big question, I guess, James, is did the pre-existing ADU, when it was constructed, conform to all codes, all requirements, and did it have all of the right permits? Because that, I guess, is the basis of some of the current inquiry, is that there is kind of this suggestion that there has been an evolution away from the spirit and character of that, that neighborhood. And notwithstanding our master plan, which is only a suggestion, it's a, it's a guiding policy document. It's not hard and fast. There is a question and concern about the character of that neighborhood. And so that raises the question about the original remodel's conformity with permitting and code.
Yeah, if I may try to answer that. The, the town planning staff did not inspect the unit at the time of the last remodel that was done in 2018. The building official at the time, who is no longer our building official, did, did a final inspection on the remodel and the house. And, you know, we at first reading put in our staff memo and identified that we would be happy to set up an inspection if council felt it necessary. And we highlighted that there were some comments from neighbors that felt that, you know, they had already done improvements. And, and we highlighted it as to whether council needed us to go and inspect it before second reading to determine what is actually built. And, and we didn't, didn't get any response or direction to do that. So, so we haven't at this point. So that's, I guess, my answer to that, that question. In terms of being responsive to people that have had inquiries on the application, I've had quite a bit and staff has had quite a bit of back and forth answering questions. You know, I could show you a whole email chain back and forth. So I, I think we've tried to be as responsive as we possibly could as staff.
Okay, well, and again, we all do our best. But I guess I must have missed the nuance of the question of prior inspection. Because you know, in past discussions on other properties and on other issues, I have raised the question about consistency in the implementation of rule or reg. And so if there was an obligation to observe this property and to permit it, and we didn't do it, then I think it's reasonable to ask why we didn't. So there's either an administrative lapse or we were exercising some other discretion, which there may be a good reason for. But if we didn't do it, don't we need to do it now?
Well, I guess my answer isn't that we didn't do it. The, the building official at the time did his final inspection on the remodel. But, but the planning staff wasn't part of that. And typically, we, we don't do an inspection on a remodel as the planning staff unless the building official, you know, calls it out and says we need to. So
But wouldn't there have to have been permits issued and light permit fees paid and all of that kind of stuff?
Yeah, yeah, there was permits issued for the 2018 remodel. And, you know, the, the area that I think we've heard concerns about from neighbors is whether there's a full second kitchen facility or not. And, you know, the plans indicated a wet bar. And there's some nuances in the town code as to what constitutes a full kitchen. And so apparently the building official at the time didn't believe what they had was a, a full kitchen. So it didn't constitute an accessory dwelling unit. But I, I can't confirm that because I, I have not inspected the space.
And if you don't, could I, Joe Fonte, would you mind if I chime in? Because I have, being the, the person that submitted the building permit and walked with Jim Wilson as he did his inspections and have the list of all of the times that he was over here, which were, you know, it's probably a dozen or so times that are all recorded in his inspection. We still have all the paperwork that, for that, we have the final inspection where he walked through and gave us our certificate of occupancy. Everything was built to per plan, per specifications in that. Since then, we've also had, the sanitation district has done an inspection of the property, which that is detailed in their report. If you look at their report, it, it lists what's in the unit. And that also is in line with exactly what was in the building permit for the plans and specifications. So it, it has been, had multiple inspections since then. Like James said, no one from the planning department came. But I don't think that that's a standard for issuing certificates of occupancy. I think it is typically the, the building official that, that takes care of those inspections. Just wanted to let you know that there, there have been multiple inspections of the property.
Okay. Well, I, I guess the point frankly is not so much a question of how you're building or what you're building, but it's a matter of consistency when we have scrutinized very heavily prior authorizations dating a decade and a half. And so if we didn't cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is, then I, I think we simply need to explain that in some way that satisfies us that we are not establishing a precedent for arbitrary or comprehensive behavior and that we are upholding the rule of law. And that's my base point on this. So I, I, I don't know what that means in terms of having James review or look at the whatever was built and determine whether it is an ADU, it isn't an ADU, or what have you. But when we have exercised extraordinary scrutiny of other projects, again, it would be inconsistent if we didn't exercise equal scrutiny of all projects or we change our policy and simply do things different going forward.
Not sure that I'm following. I don't, I don't know that there's been a deviation from any normal procedure. They submitted a building permit to do renovations and the building official is the appropriate person to review and inspect those, and that's what happened. So just because somebody in the neighborhood thinks something different happened, the documentation says differently. And that person signed off on it. So, you know, I think what they have before you now is a desire to actually build an extra kitchen so they can have a two-family dwelling, which requires a process, and we're in the middle of that. in the middle of that process, and just basically trying to perfect that for them now. And I would say, if you recall, we just did a process whereby there was an illegal ADU that had had approval back in 2004 and has been occupied since that time. It was discovered later that it was illegal. We didn't, in the interim, go and inspect it and make them rip anything out. We took them through the process and gave them an opportunity for remedy. And so, you know, I think, in this instance, we haven't found that there's a deviation from the code, but nonetheless, the applicants are coming through in a legitimate process. So, I guess I'm not following that there was a deviation, and I would object to the fact that there was.
But I guess that's the question. Has there been a deviation from code? Did they have a full kitchen, or did they not?
Not according to the inspection.
Can I interject? I think, like, I know I was the one who gave the amendment to this motion, and I'm looking at this just like I would be a juror, and I have no reason to believe that the town didn't do their job, that the town didn't follow all the procedures. I have no reason to believe that the applicant did not follow the procedures. Therefore, this is a special review, and that's what we're doing. And in a special review, we have the opportunity to say there can be special restrictions. Pretty much it.
Right, and so, and so if we need to review, then that seems like a relatively simple procedure to go in, review, and judge, adjudicate whether, in fact, there was an ADU constructed that should have conformed to a different set of policies or procedures, or whether this is indeed an innocuous little bedroom that was built on the back of somebody's house.
On the same token, that material was presented to you between the first and second reading. It's our responsibility as councilors to read the material and make sure we're up to date on what's going on. I read it, I wasn't uncomfortable with the amendment that I provided.
You presented the amendment about the six-month lease. We didn't discuss anything about kind of the review, inspection, approval, or permitting process for ADUs, so I think there...
It's like the public comment, and I saw what they were, and none of it had, you know, it was all hearsay.
Yeah. Let me try to bring this back to order here. We are in a process of entertaining questions from council of the applicant or the staff. Bill Infante, can we move on, or are you...
I mean, again, if there, if James has indicated that there was a policy step that was missed in his first intervention, then frankly, this isn't my interpretation, it isn't anyone's interpretation, this is what James is telling us. So, I don't know how you move on when there was a concession on the part of staff that we haven't crossed every T and dotted every I.
Bill, I don't...
Sorry, what was the concession? James, could you repeat that? I didn't hear that there was a misstep. I mean, you know...
Bill, I don't think that there was a misstep. You know, the building official did his inspection as he does on any CO request or inspection. The town planning staff was not part of that inspection, and typically, we're not unless there's a specific item that the building official calls out that we need to go take a look at. So, the building official at the time, Jim Wilson, did his inspection of the unit, of the remodel, and felt that it was appropriate. We do have a condition in the draft ordinance that requires the current building official to also go take a look at the unit and make sure it meets all the safety standards and requirements. So, that's another step in the process that would happen, you know, if the special review were approved for the second unit. But, you know, I don't think that there was a misstep, or, you know, something that we didn't do that we typically do in terms of inspecting this unit.
Who is it that judges whether or not a new construction constitutes an ADU or not? Is that the building staff, or is it the planning staff?
It's typically the building official when he's reviewing a permit application and doing, you know, his inspections following a building permit application.
Okay, so Jim, at the time, didn't see this as an ADU, he just saw it as whatever.
A wet bar.
Wet bar, is what's on the plans.
Right.
Is it time for public comment?
Yeah, I, yeah, I just, any further questions from council of the applicant or James Lynn? I think at this point, I would open it up to public comment. Let the record show, it's 7:45 PM, and the public hearing's open. So, Susan, are you manning the phones?
I am. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, perfectly.
Okay, and just a reminder to those that are watching, you can text 970-987-7010, or email planning@basalt.net if you would like to speak, and we don't have any emails or texts right now from the public, and I'll just start the clock to see if we get one in the next two minutes.
While we're waiting on the public comment, I do echo some of what Bill is saying. I get that the building planner didn't address it, or, you know, in their view. I guess I wonder, and I think this is more of a question for the town attorney, but do we open ourselves up under this special review for more special reviews of this type of non-ADUs, special conforming two-family units? Once again, I understand it's a special review, but does this set any type of precedent, or because it's a special review, it only applies to one property?
Sure, so special review applications are all evaluated on a case-by-case basis. You know, I think as part of the background, again, and I'll let James correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but as part of the prior remodel application, it included a wet bar, and had there been additional appliances installed that were not set out in the plans that might bump it up from a wet bar to a kitchen, then it would constitute a second unit, which would necessitate an application either for an ADU or, in some zone districts, or for a second dwelling unit like in this zone district. So, based on what was, my understanding, that based on what was constructed, it was consistent with the plan such that it didn't constitute a second unit requiring an application for a second dwelling unit. So, based on what the additional changes are being proposed by the applicant, that's what's necessitating the application for a second dwelling unit in this special review application. So, once the special review application was filed, there are evaluative criteria that provide town council some discretion as to what conditions might be placed on it, on the approval, and those are largely what are reflected in the approval ordinance. So, the long and the short of it is that there is discretion to apply those discretionary criteria on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you for that, Jeff. Susan, do we have any public comment?
We do, and I'll place that call. This is, so I'll do that now. Hi, Keith.
Yep.
This is Susan from the Basalt Town Hall, and you're here during the public comment period on 710 Soper Drive, so if you could introduce yourself and provide your comments, and just a reminder that we have a three-minute restriction.
This is Keith McDougall, 680 East Soper Drive. First, I'd like to thank Bill Infante for his questions. They weren't getting fully answered, though. What, where the answer was falling short is during the building permit application process, it was submitted as a single-family addition. So, therefore, it was only inspected, inspected and a certificate of occupancy given for a single-family addition. That's where the rub of all this is. If the applicant had identified that their intention to make this a two-family dwelling three years ago, then we would have gone through this process then, and it would have appeared much more impactful. Now, it just appears that they want to add a wall in the kitchen, which is already done. It is not hearsay. The staff has refused to go and do an inspection for six weeks, so it would not be hearsay if they had driven a half-mile up the road and spent 15 minutes looking around. Perhaps Ms. Capurco can answer if the kitchen is already in, and if the demising wall is already in.
Susan, any additional public comment?
Let me just double-check, and I just closed off with Keith. I have no additional emails or texts.
No more texts.
Okay, thank you. So, at this point, we could have discussion. I would entertain a motion, and we can have discussion on the motion. What is the council's pleasure? Anyone prepared to make a motion? I will offer some thoughts, and, you know, I think this is a circumstance where improvements were made to a single-family residence. Those improvements were properly inspected by the town's building inspector. Rumors emanating from the neighborhood about improper inspections or improper procedure are, I think, in this instance, not a basis for denial. I think the comments about character of the neighborhood are probably well-taken. However, what we have in our packet is a listing of no less than 23 residences immediately adjacent or in the immediate neighborhood that have been permitted to construct two-family dwellings. So, to deny this application would be in strict contravention of approvals that have been previously given, and would be, I think, on its face, just purely discriminatory. So, I'm not, you know, as mayor, I'm not going to make the motion, but I would really request that somebody put forward a motion so that we can move this forward.
I will put forward a motion. Just look for here, like, read it appropriately.
Yeah, why don't you just read the caption?
Mayor, I move the town council about number 11, series 2020, on second reading.
On second?
That's been moved, and second is their discussion on the motion. Hearing no discussion, then I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Absolutely. All right, let's begin with David Knight.
Yes.
Len Drummond.
Yes.
Ryan Slack. Thank you, Ryan. Gary Tenenbaum.
Yes.
Bill Infante.
Yes, and I will appeal for consistency in all manner in regard of applying our zoning rules and regs in all instances, because it's not clear that this was, upheld the same high standards of others, but at the end of the day, yes, I support it.
Thank you. Elise Huddle.
Yes.
Thank you. Bill Kane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item for council is public hearing, the second reading of ordinance number 12, series 2020. This is an ordinance of the town of Council of Basalt, Colorado, approving a license and indemnity agreement for the installation and maintenance of a fence in Redway along Spur Lane for the property at 105 West Soper Drive, Colorado. Barbara Reese property, Sarah Nodalney is managing this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that we have online the applicant Barbara Reese, as well as the representative, the case is Suzanne Jackson. And again, this is second reading of ordinance number 12, series of 2020. The applicant is asking that council consider a request for a license agreement that would allow a portion of fence to extend into the town's Redway along Spur Lane for the property at 105 West Soper Drive. And I'm just going to share my screen so I can share some images with you here. Okay, does everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. I'm just going to keep this so I can see the tiles on the side, if you don't mind. So, looking here, I just want to reorient the audience to the location of the property. This parcel outlined in yellow is just a couple of blocks from our downtown business floor here. It is a unique property and that has three street-facing frontages. We have the front frontage along West Soper Drive, the rear backs up to Tucker Lane, and our side yard here is on Spur Lane, and that is the subject of this license agreement. So, the applicant's seeking to, seeking the encroachment license to allow a number of heritage apricot trees that you can see in this photo along Spur Lane that, to enjoy the benefit provided by inclusion into the fencing of the property. This is, we can note the, this relates to the hatched area that is noted on the site plan, exhibit A of council's packet here, kind of towards the middle to rear of the property. You'll also notice that there's an area up here that staff has called out is also being an area that would enjoy the distinct benefits of the license agreement if it were approved by council. So, at the front of the lot, the fence, there was a fence there that was recently removed. It encroaches slightly into the Redway along Spur Lane as well as an existing concrete retaining wall that you'll see here in this picture, and this has been in this location since at least the 1970s when the property was developed with a single-family home, if not before. The proposed fence would extend approximately two feet from this retaining wall into the Redway that is seen in this image here. Staff has previously visited the property to work out the site triangle and the fence locations with public works, and recently revisited the site with the fire department after a letter was received from Doug Grant, who is a resident of Homestead Drive. Mr. Grant's letter was included in the packet as item 9C, it's at the end of council's packet. And just to briefly summarize, Mr. Grant has expressed his dissatisfaction with allowing a fence to be installed in the Redway in what he sees as many instances of similar encroachments within the Old Town area. Mr. Grant has also expressed concern with the fire department's ability to serve areas of Old Town due to narrow streets and dead ends, and also expressed concern with snow storage and the ability to effectively plow Spur Lane in the winter. So, as I mentioned, I met with Brooke Stott, who's assistant fire marshal on the site, and, you know, we walked the site and did a bit of measuring here. We found the street width itself to be 17 feet. Now, while 20 feet is the preferred standard for the fire department, Ms. Stott did say that the fire department can maneuver their vehicles onto this street safely. She also said that the location of the proposed fence is acceptable. This is Ms. Stott's image here that she shared. We measured it off in its proposed location and where it would be located along the site. So, she found the location to be acceptable, and she notes that it models an existing fence that is just up the street south of the property, along the same, pretty much the same line. We found that the parcel... We found that the parcel measured one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet in length. It extends all the way from Soper Strive to Tucker Lane at the rear. And the applicant is asking for that encroachment, which would be about twenty-two feet in length along Spur Lane right-of-way to accommodate those heritage fruit trees. After those fruit trees, of course, it would tuck back onto the property line to the conclusion of the property. Just to note a few things, Spur Lane is posted with no parking on pavement signs, as well as a number of other signs that you see here. There is no pedestrian walkway along Spur Lane that would be interfered with as a result of the proposed fence. The paved driving service will not be impacted by the fence. The applicant may need to relocate signage, and we will work with Public Works as a condition of the fence permit should it be granted. And per the license agreement, the applicant is responsible for the maintenance and repair of the fence, and I think that's important to note. So council has, let me just show a couple images here. We have, this is one of the signs that I do question, and there is a small sign here. I didn't get a great picture of it. It's a no parking on pavement sign that's located near this heritage fruit tree, and that would definitely need to be relocated from that site. There's also another no parking sign, no parking on pavement down at the edge of that for Tucker Lane. So, sorry, council did approve the ordinance at first reading and did not ask for any additional comments or any additional information for second reading. Staff is still supportive of the request for a license agreement at one-oh-five West Soper Strive, and would step aside just hearing from the applicant prior to any questions you may have of staff or the applicant, hearing from public if that is anything, anyone has any comments, and consider approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. I can stop sharing my screen here in case the applicant has anything they'd like to add. Pardon me, I just, moment, will I remember how to do that? Here we go. Stop, share. I don't have any questions. Thank you, Sarah, for your discussion of this, and I, I think that it's, your pictures showed what needs to be done, and I appreciate the time that you've put into answering all the questions.
Thank you, Barbara. Questions from council for the applicant or for Sarah? Clarification?
I just have one quick question. I didn't see in the packet, I don't know if I missed it, but what is Public Works' take on the snow removal? Is it in any, does it cause any problems for them? Because it is a tight road.
It is. My understanding is that actually James Lind did spend a lot of time out there with our head of Public Works, so he may be able to provide us some additional information more specific.
Yeah, Boyd Beerbaum and I did several site visits, actually, to look at the fence proposal and location. Boyd did indicate that it would, you know, make it a bit more difficult to plow, but that they could, you know, have more room after you get past the fruit tree in order to push the snow. You know, it's kind of a trade-off as to whether you, you know, want to protect the fruit tree or, you know, leave it open for potential to get hit by a plow. And so that was a concern. They thought that they could still plow and push it kind of past the bump out in the fence.
So, James, this is Bill.
Sure.
There was no conclusion that this fence would necessarily result in our Public Works Department having to haul off snow rather than plow, is there? Will the fence materially interfere with our ability to store snow along the side of the road? Does this fence imply that we're going to have added public cost to actually, you know, use front-end loaders and have to haul out, or is there adequate, not great, but adequate storage for snow along that side?
It wasn't mentioned that they would have to haul it off so that they could push it, push it past the fence and into the snow storage area.
I'm sorry, not sure I understood that. So they would have to haul it off, or they would not?
No, they didn't indicate that they would have to haul it off.
Okay, that's the seminal question. Thank you.
Bill?
Additional questions?
Bill, I've got a quick statement that we may just want to make sure that Barbara, as the owner, understands that there will be snow pushed up against the fence. So sort of, there is a bit of a displacement of snow storage, and so she may have a bit more, and I think according to the site plan, there's desire to have a gate along that, along that area, and so that gate may be blocked for part of the year because of snow storage. It indicates on here it probably is a gate that swings in, but if she intends to use it, she'd probably need to do some shoveling, and, you know, we need to make sure she understands that the snow can't go back into the right-of-way once it's pushed out up there.
Well, too much snow would be a nice problem to have. Any further questions from council? Additional questions of Barbara or Sarah? At this point, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, we have a public hearing. Yep.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so same drill. We haven't...
Was the fire department issue?
What was Glenn's question?
I missed that, I'm sorry.
Was the fire department issue a drift?
Yes. Sarah went out with them, and they were satisfied.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
At this point, yeah, we should open the public hearing?
Okay, and...
Or just allow...
The drill, again, is to text Ryan at nine-seven-oh-nine-eight-seven-seventy-ten, or email planning@basalt.net, and we'll give it a couple minutes.
Let me get you guys home before eleven.
And actually, while we're waiting to do this, I did get one text from Pam Schilling, and I think she was questioning whether, I think she was, I think Doug Grant was expecting us to read the letter into the record, so Pam, could you do that?
Doug had included on his letter, please read or place in the public record at the meeting. So what is council's pleasure?
Let me just read it into the record, Pam.
Sure, okay. Dear Board of Trustees, I am writing about ordinance number twelve, series of twenty-twenty, allowing a fence to be installed in the right-of-way along Spur Lane. There are many cases of encroachments in the old part of town that exist today, none of which are in the best interest of the people of Basalt. The fire department would not respond to fires in the Hillside District, old part of town, because of inadequate access, narrow and dead-end streets, to name a few, when the Lake Christine fire was active. When fences and walls are right on the edges of the asphalt or traveled way, there is no place to plow the snow, no snow storage. Spur Lane is narrow, with just enough room for two cars to pass in summer. In winter, it becomes a one-lane bobsled run with difficulty stopping, going down, and spinning out, going up. In winter, you will force the Public Works to load and haul off the snow just to maintain one lane of traffic. Then where does the snow that's hauled, go that's hauled off? Many times, close to our rivers and streams where the water with sand and salt residue flow into those streams. When the snow is left on the shoulders of the road or in snow storage along the travelways, the resulting melt soaks into the ground, leaving the sand salt to be swept up later. Did you consider the cost of hauling snow instead providing for snow storage along the travelways? What is the overall effect of allowing encroachments into the public right-of-way in a part of town with narrow right-of-ways to begin with? Emergency access, limited or no access at all for large fire and ambulance vehicles? More conflicts between vehicles, more difficult to move about, whether in vehicles or bicycles? How about walking? No shoulder to get out of the traffic lane? Cost to each and every citizen of town for needless hauling of snow? River and stream degradation from snow pile runoff? Just to name a few, and most of this short list are health and safety issues. It is way past time to stop the encroachments in dead-end streets and alleys. One owner may enjoy a little more square footage for themselves, but it comes with a cumulative negative effect and cost to each and every single citizen of the town. Bit by bit, a fence here, a wall there, we are losing the ability to move about town in a safe and efficient manner. Please contact the Public Works and ask how serious the snow storage problem is presently. The property ordinance number twelve applies to also, right now, has a steep driveway accessing Tucker Lane that has gravel flowing into Tucker Lane, reducing the travelway, but making the driveway less steep. The driveway grade should match Tucker Lane grade at the property line, not extend out into Tucker Lane. Are these trade-offs that we really want to make? I am looking forward to your response. Sincerely, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And I did not receive any additional emails or texts.
Thank you. At this point, then, I'd close the public hearing on ordinance number twelve, and ask if there is a motion.
My screen just went to sleep. I'll make a motion here.
Okay.
May I move that the town council adopt ordinance number twelve, series of twenty-twenty on the second reading?
There are second? Been moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. I would just like to acknowledge the Doug Grant and the Grant family for being kind of unbelievably steady watchdogs for the hill. These guys have been up there for a very long time. They know where every bone is buried, and they're quite a resource and asset for the community, and I seriously appreciate Doug's letter and thoughts about this, and hope he appreciates that we got to be fair to everyone, and if this doesn't constitute a major hindrance of our ability to maintain our streets, then there's probably no reason to not approve it, because there are just so many wild variances that exist up on the hill already. So I just would like to extend a personal thanks to Doug for his letter. So with that, I would ask that we call the roll.
Certainly. Begin with Elise Hoddle.
Yes.
Thank you, Elise. Ryan Slack.
Yes.
Thank you. Glenn Drummond.
Yes.
Thank you, Glenn. Bill Infante.
Yes.
David Knight.
Yes.
Gary Tenenbaum.
Yes.
And Bill Kane.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I think our last formal order of business is a resolution, the town council of Basalt, Colorado, adopting an investment policy. So Christie is back on with us.
Yes, thank you. So, and we've also got Doug McDonald with us from the Finance Advisory Board as well. I'm just so excited that our Finance Advisory Board is starting to assist with these presentations, and they've done a lot of work to get up to this point, and we're starting to get some output that we're able to share, which is pretty exciting. So I'm going to share my screen, and I'll let Doug go ahead and start this one off, on the Finance Advisory Board's role with this and what their thoughts are about this policy.
All righty, thank you, Christie. I'll be brief. Just the background, the Financial Advisory Board was involved with reviewing the investment policy from its original draft created by our financial director. After gathering a great deal of input from multiple sources, we think that Christie has done a really great job of consolidating local, state, and external regulatory requirements into what is incise and common sense policy. I think it's readable by the normal person, and I think it makes a great deal of sense. It satisfies the three major investment objectives that we had to start off with, mainly safety, liquidity, and return, kind of the standard. So at our last meeting, the Advisory Board unanimously voted to approve the adoption of this policy, and therefore, just the council to do likewise. It's the Resolution twenty of twenty-twenty. Christie?
Thanks, Doug. I appreciate that. Just as a background on this particular policy as well, this was a recommendation, as Doug mentioned, from our auditors, from our last twenty-eighteen audit, and so we just wanted to make sure to complete that and to get an investment policy on the books. As Doug said, it's just so important with safety and making sure that we have a fairly easy-to-use policy, because we're a small town, and we also want to balance that with adequate internal controls to make sure that we're protecting our liquid assets effectively. So I believe that this is a really good balance of that, and the two samples that mainly we use were the GFOA sample, Governor's or Government Finance Officers Association, and also the City of Aspen's policy. We condensed their policy into a easier to implement policy, but still meeting all the criteria as Doug stated.
Yeah, I would just like to offer a few comments. I had the pleasure of navigating through the two thousand eight, two thousand nine recession when I was the town manager. We had about three million dollars on hand. We had no investment policy, and we just kind of came to work one day and listened to the news story that said we were not sure we had a solvent banking system in the United States. So we took three million dollars and divvied it up, sorry to tell war stories here, but we divvied it up into fifty thousand-dollar CDs, so we'd have full coverage by FDIC insurance, and we formed it out to sixty different banks across the United States. So I can't tell you, I read every word of this thing, and I just, it sort of warms the cockles of my heart to see how confident and reassuring having this policy in place is. This is, we've come a long way, I'm telling you, from two thousand nine. This is very cool having this. So thank you very much, Doug especially, for the hard work on it, and it just looks very solid to me, so thank you.
I feel better about having it, too.
Yeah, it's great. You know, it's so much better than investing in Greyhounds. They just are not reliable.
No, they're not.
We didn't listen to our AJOA, it made perfect sense.
Elise had her hand up. I, you know, it's so much better than investing in Greyhounds, uh, they just are not reliable.
No, they're not.
We didn't listen to our AJOA, it made perfect sense.
Elise had her, Elise had her hand up.
Um, I, I think this is great to have an investment policy, and we don't need to spend a bunch of time on it, but I just wanted to throw an idea out there. Um, you know, the Town of Basalt has a, um, climate action commitment. Um, I think the only place that this would actually factor in maybe is the money market fund, but, um, I, I love the idea of divesting from any oil and gas, um, funds, um, and not, not participating in that as a way to be consistent with our climate action policy.
Well taken, yeah, we really ought to be pursuing that, you know, green investing guidelines for sure.
I would definitely support Elise's proposal that we disinvest from oil and gas, and we may want to add other filters as well. I had, I had a couple other questions though, um, one of them was about the pooling of funds versus having our funds in segregated accounts, I mean, that's mostly an administrative issue for the broker-dealer, it doesn't cost more money to have more funds, so I was just curious why we wanted to pool when segregation is not a big issue. I had a question about investment in Town of Basalt issuance. In one of the clauses, um, we suggest that we can invest in Town of Basalt certificates of participation and other debt. I, I wonder, um, how great an idea that is for some, and I, I'd appreciate it if Doug or someone else on FAB wanted to comment. And then I finally just wanted to ask when and how we're going to tend for an investment manager.
Yeah, I, I'm your investment manager, um, I think in the policy itself, it, um, it states that the, the finance director is, is the investment manager, so that would be me. Um, but looking at, uh, the couple of questions and comments you guys had about, uh, the climate, um, the one thing that we invest in right now heavily on money markets and pooling funds, it kind of answers two different questions, um, is Colotrust. There's, um, a couple of pooled funds for governments and school districts, um, in the state of Colorado, one is called Colotrust, and one is, um, SeaSafe, and, um, the town historically used Colotrust, and, and so, um, when you're, when you're looking at that, um, there are some, uh, some, um, A-rated, uh, um, commercial papers in their, uh, in their portfolios, but mostly, uh, it's government-backed securities, so, um, so I can look into the Colotrust to see about, um, how much they would invest in those kind of non-climate-friendly, uh, organizations, um, and try to mitigate or minimize that, um, sometimes we don't have the control we want, um, with the, the pools. But the good thing about those is, is it really helps to, uh, reduce our, our turn involved with multiple accounts and making sure to manage each account, especially when it comes to fraud. It really helps to mitigate our fraud risk when we have our, um, our funds at Colotrust. Um, when you've got to really look at multiple bank accounts, sometimes, um, it's hard to keep track of all of them, um, regularly to make sure that there isn't something coming out that shouldn't, and that kind of thing. Um, just to, to pool our accounts, I believe is a pretty good approach for that reason. Um, and, and the other reason with that, uh, especially as it comes to Colotrust, is that, um, then we have two options within Colotrust, one is their government-backed securities option, and one is, um, government-backed and, uh, commercial paper options, and they do the investing for us, um, with no additional risk to the town, and, um, that's the answer there. And then the, the COPs, um, certificates of participation question, I, I don't think we'd ever get ourselves into that, that situation. Um, what we did is, um, we followed the guidelines, uh, per Colorado Revised Statute, and, um, so they're fairly broad, I couldn't see myself doing some of the investing that, um, that's in there, and, um, but if there's something within the CRS that you're not comfortable with, we can obviously omit that.
Um, Christie, I'm, I'm sorry to come back at this, um, so as I understand, we are going to invest our funds through Colotrust. Colotrust will make the investment decisions for the placement of funds in specific securities or other instruments, is that right?
That's true.
You're, you're not, you're not going to be making the specific investment decisions on individual positions in any debt, money market, or other, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, I'm not going to do anything to that effect, um, without more conversation with council, and I think that that's the important part of having our, um, uh, investment portfolio in the audit, in our audit, so that you guys always have a picture of what we're investing in and have an understanding of that if any investment is changed that you can ask. I mean, I think that this policy for me is, is really a breath of f- fresh air, just like for Bill Kane had stated, um, because it gives me that guidance and makes sure that I'm, you know, being prudent in the investment the way that council would like me to invest in Finance Advisory Board, and then it's my responsible, responsibility to do so and to make sure that I'm informing council of any changes or re- recommended changes.
How much does Colorado Trust, or Colotrust, charge us to manage our money?
It's a very small percentage off of the, um, the investment, uh, percentage, I don't have that with me right now, um, but I can definitely get that to you, um, it's, it's a reduction in our percentage that would be received, but it's very small.
I mean, industry standards like two percent, I'd expect they'd be two or less here, right?
Much less, I think, yeah.
If we could just figure, you know, find out, that'd be great.
Sure, be happy to.
Very cool, great work though, this is fantastic that we have the policy.
Good.
Additional comments, questions from council on our investment policy?
Thanks for doing this, this is, I read through it as well, you know, word for word, and I, I think it's great, thank you.
You know, Finance Advisory Board was really, um, key in helping with this whole process too, I really appreciated their input, and, and it really, I really have to note as well that I think that the Finance Advisory Board is working as it, as it's, uh, supposed to be, um, in relation to the community involvement, um, in, in helping with the credibility of our finances, and, and coming with these policy decisions is really a great step.
Thanks, Christie. Uh, a question for Pam, do we, uh, need to open this for public comment, or can we take action on the resolution as is?
Um, that's a good question for the attorney.
This is Jeff, this is not, this is not a public hearing, the, the Town Council can take action on the, on the policy itself.
Great, thank you. I would, at that point then, entertain a motion to approve Resolution number twenty, series of twenty twenty.
Mayor, I move the Town Council to approve Resolution number twenty, series of twenty twenty, as amended by Elise to address investment in, to non-investment in oil and gas assets, as well.
I second.
So it's been moved and seconded, uh, do we need a roll call, or can we do a voice vote?
No, it needs to be a roll call.
Roll call.
It's a resolution, yeah. Okay, let's begin with, uh, Bill Infante.
Okay, I vote yes, with also further examination of Article M on the obliga- investment in obligation certificates of participation or lease purchase of the Town of Basalt.
So that's a yes.
That's a yes.
Okay, thank you.
With that question about Article M.
I don't, are we amending the motion at this point then, sir? I'm not clear.
That probably would have been an amendment to the motion, yes. So in the same way that we will examine Elise's wonderful proposal, I would also ask that we, um, examine this article that permits us to invest in our own securities, which basically means we can fund ourselves with money that is taxpayer, so...
I would ask Elise whether she would be willing to accept that addition to her amendment.
Uh...
It was actually my amendment.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's in addition to what, what Elise had suggested.
Yeah, so your provision, your proviso was relative to non-investment in oil and gas, and Bill's proviso places restrictions on, uh, certificate participation.
I do, I do want to know, um, I just want to know that if... Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead, Christie.
I, I just want to note that, um, if we're going to divest from the climate, I mean, oil and gas specific, I'm going to have, I, I mean, we may, it may preclude us from those, uh, pools, so, but I, I think we'll be okay on the government-backed part of those pools, so, okay.
Okay.
So, so just in terms of procedure where we are, there is a, a, a motion by Ryan Slack with a condition to not include investments, um, in the, in, uh, in oil and gas entities, and there was a second, and then there's the roll call, and I'm, as I gather, uh, based on Bill Infante's comment, there's a request to be a, that, that, um, Ryan Slack, uh, restate his motion with an additional amendment, I, I think that is where we're at.
That's really good summary.
So, so Ryan, do you, would you restate your, wish to restate your motion with the suggested amendment by, uh, Bill Infante?
Mayor, I move the Town Council to approve Resolution number twenty, series of twenty twenty, as amended by both Elise and Bill Infante, addressing invest- using investments of the town and, as well as oil and gas.
Great.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded, and Pam, let's call the roll on that motion.
Okay.
Can I, I, I have a question, what is, what, what is, can you summarize what the, what Bill's, um, amendment to the motion was, I'm, I'm not clear.
I don't like the idea of using government funds for the purpose of financing our operations. These are reserve funds, it's kind of like the Federal Reserve buying US government debt. They're not supposed to do it, although they have recently. So, the notion of putting taxpayer resources at risk for the purpose of financing our government is probably not good practice.
I thought the resolution stated that nothing could be put at risk, it would be a hundred and two percent pretty much every time we invest.
No, it says we can invest in any obligation certificate of participation or a lease purchase of the Town of Basalt, and that would be exempt, as I understand, from the hundred and two percent collateralization. But regardless, a hundred and two percent collateralization on a dollar is not going to get you very much, so, um, I am uncomfortable with Article M.
I'm going to, yeah, and I'll check with the banks too, to make sure that when we're, you know, when we're in our banks, like, if, you know, how, I mean, how that all plays in with the COPs, and if that's tied in somehow.
So we'd, we'd be simply omitting M, is that what this amendment to the motion is?
Unless we come back with a convincing argument from an investment advisor or any other person whose investment guidance we trust, but otherwise, no, I would say no, we cannot buy our own certificates of participation or lease purchases.
Okay, um, are we clear on the motion? That's, I think procedurally where we are, so David asked for a clarification of Bill's amendment. David, are you satisfied, uh, with that clarification? You don't have to be satisfied on the merits of it, just are you satisfied that you understand what it says?
Yeah, I, I, I understand.
Okay. So, I think we're ready to call the roll.
Okay, uh, let's start again, Bill Infante.
Yes.
Thank you. David Knight?
No.
Glenn Drummond?
Uh, I'm going to say no.
Thank you. Uh, Gary Tenenbaum?
No.
Thank you. Elise Hoddle?
Yes.
Ryan Slack? And Bill Kane?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries by a no's, four to three.
Wow. That's our first split vote, um. So with that, happy note, I will, um, be pleased to, uh, I think we have information correspondence all clear, unless there are questions on that. Um, I'm pleased to announce that the meeting is adjourned, and it is eight thirty-six PM.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Drinks, guys.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.